Closed session. Do we have any public speakers?
Yes, we do. As I call your name, please come forward. Speakers are Jeffrey Fields, Isaac Martinez, Kevin Tisdale, and Sheila Williams. If there are any speakers via Zoom, please raise your hand at this time. Jeffrey Fields.
I've been here for about a year now. My supervisor says I'm one of the most upward mobility candidates he's seen in a long time. I'm just here to speak on the morale of my counterparts. We're kind of overworked and underpaid, point blank. I'm from a small town about 2,000 miles from here. I made Richmond my home. I've come to love it. Enjoy coming to work. I enjoy my job, but I'm just not getting enough. I have to supplement my income. Guys, I work with a great group of guys, but we're all on the same page. We just need some more money. I love it here, but I don't want to leave. If we don't get any more money, I'm gonna be forced to leave. And I'm sure that's what's been happening here for a long time. That's about all I have.
Isaac Martinez?
If I may, I'd be very interested in knowing what positions you hold.
Good afternoon. Council, my name is Isaac Martinez, and I'm the maintenance lead worker for the traffic signs and lines division. And I came to basically piggyback off of Jeff. So Jeff works with me. These are maintenance two. We all hold Class A licenses. We all take care of numerous things in the city as far as signs, as far as all your striping that goes on, as far as if anybody runs into any structures. We're the ones that fix all the signs and make sure everything's up to code with the MUTCD. So we do work very hard, but we got a small crew. So it's not just money that we're asking for. We're asking for personnel to be given to us so we can keep the city of Richmond beautiful and safe. And it's hard to do that right now. And I've been here for six, seven years, holding a position for going on four now. And it's been a struggle since I was a maintenance aide to now being a... I'm a Richmond resident. I spend too much of my income to live and take care of my kids when I see people that are higher up living good. And we're out here in the rain and the storms, in the summertime when we're paving. We're working our butts off. And we're trying to keep good morale within our crews. It's too many parks to take care of. There's too much street square footage to take care of for the amount of people we got. And for us to stay working as hard as we are, we would like to be paid the way that other people around us are getting paid. And that's all we asking right now. We ask for our class and comp, whatever they got on the table, if it's fair. We're asking that, you know, we come to a conclusion where both of us can win. And that's as far as just giving us a fair wage. I know some people might lose, some people might win, but we be asking for us to have a chance to live like ordinary people and have the same opportunities for our kids and the people after us, just as far as having a fair wage. And also, we trying to, we trying to set a path for the future employees that come. You know, that we came here and we got what we deserve. And that's all we asking right now, that the council look over whatever's put on the table and make a decision so we could, you know, keep our crews morale and stop having people go somewhere else because they not getting paid enough money and someone else will. Thank you.
Kevin Tisdale?
Thank you. Thank you. Honorable Mayor, City Council, Kevin Tisdale, Code Enforcing Officer, Vice President for the Richmond Chapter, SEIU. I come today again to tell you, piggybacking on, you know, what other members have said, you know, we're here to say, hey, we need, we need your help. The importance is to put the employees at the priority of the city. How is it going to get paid for? Currently, SEIU has an almost 90% vacancy rate, saves the city about $5.3 million a year. That's as of February this year. So, you know, the money's there. Last year, there was a set aside of 7.3 million. The money is there. We need the respect. We need the, you know, to help provide services for the community because crews are stricken, you know. This is not a lot of people. It's not a lot, you know, six Code Enforcement Officers. You know, I don't know how many maintenance twos. I don't know how many, you know, parking enforcement we have. You know, we need more people. We need to be better at market for the equity study to reflect the city at market. So rest my time. Thank you.
Our last speaker in person is Sheila Williams.
Hello, my name is Sheila Williams and I'm the payroll coordinator. I've been with the city for 13 years, been in payroll all 13 of those years. When I first came to the city in finance, it was full. It was four people in payroll. Today, there's only two. Last year, from January to May, there was only me. And they hired a new person in May. And I thank God for that new person, but we're still in the training mode. So we need people. They're trying to hire payroll manager, but they, you know, can't get one because the pay is not enough. We need you to support us as we've been supporting the city. Like this young man, I love my job. I've been in Richmond all my life. My grandchildren go to the elementary schools in Richmond. My children graduated from Richmond. So I want to stay here. I don't want to have to go anywhere to live. And Richmond is beautiful. I don't know if you've had a chance to just really go around here just to see all the beautiful sights that we have, but we want to stay in Richmond, work in Richmond, live in Richmond. And we just want your support. I don't want to say we supported you, so we expect that back. But I'm gonna say we supported you and we expect that back. Thank you.
We do have two hands raised on Zoom, but one of them says "presentation in chambers", and the other one says "video roll in", so I'm not sure. Just work. Can you please call all speakers?
Presentation in chambers. Are you a public speaker? Hello?
We'll call the next one.
Okay. Video roll in. If you are a speaker, you have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. No sound.
That concludes our public speakers.
All right. Thank you for your comments. If there are no other speakers, then this meeting will, is adjourned. Goes into closed session. Okay, so, so let's move on. The council is in session at 7:52. Shall we have the pledge of allegiance? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Bada. Let's remember Jimenez.
Presente.
Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
Here. Councilmember Robinson.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Councilmember Zapata.
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Next item. Statement of conflict of interest. Do we have any? Hearing none. We'll move on to the next item. Agenda review. Does anyone have any changes they need to make, want to make? If not, I would like to move item. Can you hear me now? All right. So I will repeat myself. I am pulling, or I'm sorry, I'm pulling P8C Contract with Whip O'Brien, consulting for consulting services for ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. And I am also continuing R1 Addition to Staff to the Mayor's Office to the next meeting on 3/28/23. Are there any other changes? If not, City Clerk, can you read the next item?
Yes. Next item is a report from the City Attorney. A final decision's made during closed session.
Hopefully, is this on? Yes. Okay, so for the closed session, the item which is listed as initial litigation, one case, that item was not discussed. The item listed as Beamer versus City of Richmond, the council directed, voted to for staff to proceed with settlement negotiations regarding the Wine Haven matter. A very brief report was made on that concerning the Richmond versus Pacific Gas and Electric. We gave a status report on negotiations concerning that matter, concerning the real prop negotiations concerning Miraflores. We gave a status report on that. Direction was given for negotiations to the negotiator. And then the last item involved negotiation with all the labor units. The direction was given to the city's negotiator for continuing negotiation of those matters. There was no reportable action otherwise taken in any of those matters.
Thank you. City Clerk, next item.
The next item is a report from the City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Martinez and members of the City Council. I want to thank all of the city staff that are currently responding to the 15th Atmospheric River. We have a number of crews out from the Public Works Department, from the Fire Department, and from the Police Department now. And thank you to the communication staff in the dispatch center. If you have an urgent matter, if there's a tree down in your community, for example, blocking a roadway, please dial 911. I want to make a couple of other announcements this evening as well. Coming up, we have the Spring Egg Hunt. That's going to be hosted by our Richmond Recreation Division in Nickel Park. That will be on April 1st at 10:00 a.m. If you have any questions regarding this event, please call 510-620-6793. It's going to start at 10:00 a.m. and end at noon in Nickel Park in the Central Grass area, which is at 3230 McDonald Avenue. And we also have staff this evening here from the Public Works Department. So I was going to ask them to please come forward at this time so I can introduce them. We've been doing a really phenomenal job of hiring across the city. Last year, we hired, last fiscal year, we had 82 new hires and 49 promotions. And so far this year, we have 54 new hires and 41 promotions. So I wanted to introduce our new public work staff. I thought maybe Robert or Daniel was going to come up, but I think they're going to let me read the script here. So, Robert Armijo is our new deputy director. And then Daniel, do you want to go ahead and turn on the mic and introduce your team? Then, look, I have, like, I can't, we can't hand papers to each other anymore.
Good evening, Mayor Martinez, City Council members. Thank you very much. As you can see, we were just, we practiced this very, very much before the meeting. Yeah, I'm here to introduce the three new members of our engineering staff. By now, I believe all of you know, actually, Mr. Robert Armijo, who is our Deputy Director of Public Works and City Engineer. Robert started with us back in mid-December. And after Robert, we, we went to a hunt, trying to get some engineers here, and we got three good ones. And I want to start with Wendy Welbrook. I think it's very evident Wendy is, but if you can raise your hand. Wendy is one of our new senior civil engineers. Wendy started working for the city on February 28. She graduated from UC Davis with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and has over 18 years of experience working in both the private and public sector. She has gained experience over the course of her career in engineering design and project management for projects in residential and commercial development, storm water management, and public infrastructure. Prior to joining the city of Richmond, she was part of the capital division team for the city of Berkeley's Department of Parks, Recreation, and Waterfront and managed capital improvement projects related to parks, playgrounds, and recreation facilities. Wendy is excited to join the city and looks forward to improving the city's infrastructure and multiple of public amenities. She was born and raised in the East Bay area, and she currently lives in the May Valley neighborhood of Richmond with her husband, son, daughter, and dog. In her free time, she enjoys running, gardening, hiking, biking along the Bay Trail, and spending time on the beach with her family. Welcome, Wendy. In the middle, we have Mr. Joseph Munoz. Joseph is our new capital projects manager. And he'll be, just to give you a heads up, he is right now doing all the work getting to the grant reimbursement. And he has made a big progress on that and will be presenting that information, I believe, in the next, the next meeting. Joseph started working for the city on February 21st, just one week before Wendy. So none of them... Yeah, none of them has, they have even one month with the city. He graduated, he also graduated from UC Davis with a bachelor's in civil engineering. After college, he worked for the city in County San Francisco in the Department of Public Works for over 15 years. Through his time in San Francisco Public Works, he advanced in a variety of roles, eventually landing as a project lead for various capital improvement projects. Joseph's goals are to be able to provide positive and lasting impacts for the local communities through the city's capital project, develop a multiplier mindset in priority management to accommodate the fast-paced environment of the city of Richmond, and create meaningful relations with new coworkers and to learn from them. Joseph's interests include jogging on the San Francisco Bay Trail, family trips with his wife and three children, and decluttering around the home, particularly his children's toys, not the children. Thank you, Joseph, for joining. And last, but not least, Mr. Ken Chang. Ken is one of our new senior civil engineers. He has the longest tenure in the city. Started on January 18th. And so he just turned two months. Ken attended Cal Poly Pomona, California State Polytechnic University Pomona in Southern California. Before joining the city of Richmond, Ken worked in the private sector for One Technology, Inc., a geotechnical instrumentation engineering firm for which, among other projects, he was part of the extension of the SFMTA Central Subway in San Francisco, and also worked at Bellici and Associates, a civil engineering land development, surveying, and construction management firm based in Concord, California. He was heavily focused on designing schools and capital improvement projects in numerous cities for sewer, storm, and water design projects. Ken is also a Richmond resident. He was born and raised in San Francisco, California. And on his downtime, he likes to go to dog parks, welding, and fabricating. Took a couple of years of welding and woodwork courses before COVID. He likes to watch TV, play games, and most of all, he likes to cook and eat, especially cook for his coworkers and supervisors. That, that I added. His home in Richmond is currently going under construction. So you will be welcome once he's come through. Thank you, Ken, for joining the team.
We have an officer that is joining us. So for members of the public, we always have an officer in the meetings to be thoughtful about how everyone feels in this space and to be making sure that if someone needs an escort afterwards, they can have one. So Chief, would you like to introduce the officer?
Sure. Officer Terry Thomas is the new City Council Liaison. Come on up. He is replacing Officer Middleton, who did the job for many years and retired earlier this year. So this is Officer Terry Thomas.
Thank you. With that, I conclude my report. Thank you very much. And next week, we'll have more people.
All right. Thank you so much. And I want the public to know that public comments is allowed under open forum over anything from these reports. Next item. No, we're way, way behind. Next item.
Our next item is reports of officers, referrals to staff, and general reports, including AB 1234 reports.
Yes. Oh. Go ahead.
I just want to give a short report and let the community know that we will be having our annual... We restarted an annual literacy festival, and it will occur on April 29th, right in Civic Center Plaza, right in front of the auditorium outdoors. And we'll be having poetry and puppet show for the kids, and speakers, and free food, and book giveaways. So I've been working with staff on that, and I'm really excited. And I know the City Manager will be posting the flyer in all the weekly reports until the 29th, so thank you.
Councilmember Bada.
Thank you. First of all, Happy New Year, everyone. Happy Nouruiz. Please help yourselves to the sweet outside and take a coin for prosperity. I have two updates, or two reports, actually. One is the city of Richmond is working on local hazard mitigation plan. And I would like to invite you to participate in the process. The reason why is that FEMA only provides money to the hazards already identified in the plan. If there is a flood or anything, mudslide in an area that has not been recognized in the plan, no money would be given to us. So your participation is welcome. The second item is a point-of-sale ordinance that we are working on with citizen groups. And we are inviting Public Works, Fire Department, some community groups, Forest Advisory Commission, to make sure that we minimize wildfire and mudslide dangers in the area with right vegetation management and fuel reduction. We need to educate ourselves, our residents, and the city on the right type of plants for the city for wildfire mitigation and mudslide mitigation. Anybody interested, please contact me. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick update on my commissions here. The Richmond-Shimada Commission, they are hosting this week. They're hosting a couple individuals that are here from Shimada. So you might see a few of the young members running around in our streets, learning more about Richmond and our state. If you would like to meet them, you're more than welcome to their going away party. It's the Sayonara Party will be at Mechanics Bank at Hilltop at 5:30 on Monday. So please come out and check them out. There's also, if you're interested, that commission has a couple of available slots. It's a really great commission, and you can learn more about it on our website. Also, for the Economic Development Commission, they are working on this year's Taste of Richmond. So if you are a small business restaurant and you want to participate, please reach out so that you can participate. And if you want to just go and taste all this great food, stay in tune. We will provide you more information as we continue developing this event. And then the ECIA Environmental Community Commission, we are looking for more individuals to join so we can get that commission up and going. So if you're interested, please reach out. Thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry, one more thing. I want to really thank the staff during these really crazy storms. They have all gone above and beyond. You might all have seen trees lights out. Everything's out, everything's in, everything's not supposed to be where it's not supposed to be. They have gone above and beyond. So thank you to everyone for stepping up for our residents here in Richmond. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any others? If not, next item.
Our next item is a report from the Reimagining Task Force.
Is there any representation?
Mr. Mayor, sometimes they let me know if they're not going to be here or if they are here, but I haven't heard in terms of... I know they've been having trouble with getting a quorum or actually having a place for their meeting. So maybe there's some issues and they don't really have an update right now. I don't know.
Okay, in that instance, we'll hold it until after open forum. So, next item.
Our next item is open forum. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes to address the council. Please keep your comments respectful. The two speakers I have in person are Gonzalo Ochoa and Mark Wasberg. And will the individuals that would like to address the council that are joining us by Zoom, please raise your hands at this time. Gonzalo?
I'm the president of the 2013 Merchants Association, and I'm here to let you know, guys, that we're going to have another year with your support. Let's think of the Mayo event, and it's going to be May 7. So we're going to start at 7, I believe, to 5. So we're going to start the 7th, I believe, to 5 in the evening. So thank you, and I hope you guys can give us the support again. Thank you.
My next speaker is Mark Wasberg.
Hopefully, the United States Supreme Court will make the right decision by keeping these transgenders out of women's sports. These transgenders are a fraud. They're fake. Because the girls are losing, that's why. They still are a man. Bruce Jenner, before he, after he mutilated his body, he admitted that he could hit a golf ball three times as far as any woman. This is why he don't play golf with women. They're a bunch of pedophile's. They want to go into the women's locker room and pedophile, pervert after young girls. This is what they're doing. It's a fraud and phony and they know it. You can't change your biological makeup of a, of a human being. Either you're born or male or female. The way things are going now in the public schools, they're telling their children that you are not what you are. You're them or you're it. Are you sure you're really a female? Are you sure you're really a male? This is what the gay community is doing. It's disgusting as hell and I guarantee it. These people are going to be annihilated. This is the most immoral thing that these homosexuals and lesbians and transgenders could do. Even our lawmakers are behind it. You got a president that's a pedophile. Who wants to have little boys that sit on his lap? He wants to have little boys play with his hairy legs. And you're going to tell me that's not a pedophile? Sick, man. That's what the Democratic Party is doing. Lie after lie after lie. And the people are so damn stupid, they're sitting there believing this stuff. Now for discrimination against women, the United Nations, there's always going to be discrimination against everybody. Read Genesis, chapter 3, verse 15 through 17.
Your time is expired. Thank you. And now looking at the speakers for from Zoom, I do not see any hands.
All right. If that concludes the speakers, we'll move on to the next item.
Next item is approval of the consent calendar. And that excludes item P8C. And that item is, hold on one second. The contract with Wit O'Brien LLC for consulting services related to American Rescue Plan Act. That was removed from the consent calendar for discussion.
Rule call.
We need a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
On second.
Motion by Councilmember Willis, seconded by Councilmember Sepeda. Rule call.
Councilmember Bana?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Zapata?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Next item.
Hold on one second. The next item is under budget session, item Q1, is to receive a report on the city's annual comprehensive financial report, ACRF for fiscal year 2021 through 2022.
Good morning, good evening, Mayor Martinez and members of the city council. This evening, we have Bedawi and Associates with us and Jerry from our finance team along with Delmi and Nikki Mastay, our finance director and deputy city manager. And I will go ahead and turn it over to Jerry to introduce the item and introduce himself to the city council. And then we'll hand it off to Bedawi and Associate.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Martinez and Councilmember. We finance team here tonight to bring you the city's annual comprehensive financial report, SNS Act for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. And we also bring presentations on the act from city's auditor, Ahmed Bedawi from Bedawi and Associate. Also.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Jerry, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff and members of the audience. My name is Ahmed Bedawi. I am the audit partner on the city of Richmond Audit. I am glad to be here in person after three years of auditing the city and doing virtual meetings. So I'm very pleased to be here in person and present to you in person. I believe you have a copy of my presentation. I'm not sure if it's going to be coming on your screen or not.
ACRT, can you please load the slide deck?
All right. So I'll get started. This is the presentation for the fiscal year 2022 audit. On slide number two, this is the agenda of what I'm going to cover today. I'll let you know who the engagement team was, what were our deliverables and the scope of our audit, areas we emphasized on during our audit process, the type of audit opinion we issued and summarize for you some of the numbers in your financial statements, provide you some of the required communications as your independent auditor and see if you have any questions for me. Of course, feel free to interrupt me anytime you do have questions. We don't have to wait until the end of the presentation. On slide number four, you will see the composition of our engagement team. And I was the engagement partner. We always have a quality control reviewer. This person is independent. This person is independent from the audit process. And their role is to review our work, the audit team's work, making sure that we adhere to professional standards and also to provide the second review of the financial statements. We had an audit manager, an audit senior, and we had three professional staff also assigned to the audit. On slide number five are the deliverables and the scope of our audit. We were mainly engaged to provide an opinion on the city's basic financial statements. The city is subject to government auditing standards, which require us to also issue an opinion on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance. We also provide what we call the single audit, which is an audit of the city's federal grants. It's a compliance audit of the city's federal expenditures. This is actually, this audit is ongoing and it's about to be completed in the next few days or so. In addition to that, we are also engaged to provide an opinion on the city's public financing authority. We prepare what we call the annual transaction financial report, which is an electronic report that is submitted to the state controller's office. We prepare that for the city, for the public financing authority, for the pension plans. So those were done back in January as they are due. We perform and agree upon procedures for the appropriation limit to review the city's calculation of the appropriation limit. And then finally, we are also required to communicate with the governing body, which is what I'm doing today. And we normally issue a letter summarizing this communication about the scope of the audit and difficulties and so on. So.
All right, let's leave questions till the end of the presentation.
Right. On slide number six, areas of primary audit emphasis. And we had four main areas of emphasis. Most of them are pretty standard in most audits that we performed. The first one is the risk of management overriding control. This risk exists in any audit that we do. Management are the one usually responsible for designing, implementing, and monitoring internal control over financial reporting. And they are in a position to sometimes override those controls. We are not aware that this has occurred. However, we have to design the audit procedures to mitigate that risk or at least reduce it to an acceptable level. So we try to make sure that we assign more experienced personnel to more complex areas of the audit to incorporate an element of unpredictability in the audit process. So we don't let management know ahead of time every area we're going to look at and every transaction we're going to review. We review journal entries prepared by management. We test them, make sure that they are properly supported, that there is a proper rationale behind those entries. We review estimates prepared by management, make sure they are free of bias, and a variety of other procedures that we perform to mitigate that risk. Impact of the shelter in place, this is kind of probably the last time you're going to see it. Obviously, this became a risk when COVID first started and a lot of the work was done remotely. I think for most of our clients now, this is subsiding where either the client have already adapted to those or went back to onsite. But nonetheless, we still considered whether there were any impacts still from the shelter in place for this year. Another area were revenues and receivables and the risk of improper revenue recognition. So again, this is one of those default risks in any audit. Auditors always assume that management have the motivation to overstate revenues and to understate expenditures, unless we can justify otherwise. So we don't try to justify otherwise. We just consider revenues to be an area of a higher risk. We rely heavily on third-party confirmations. So we send confirmations to the county, to granting agencies, to the state, asking them to confirm the amounts submitted to the city. We reconcile those to the city's accounting records and make sure that we are able to reconcile them. In addition to testing of revenues like license and permits and utility revenues and so on. And then finally, the last area of focus was pension and OPEB. Just by nature, pension and OPEB involve very large amounts. And also there are complexities that goes into those accounting. So there are actuarial studies that the city have to obtain. Those actuarial studies have to be interpreted, extract information from them to record activities during the year. And then there are also assumptions that have to be evaluated that the actuary is used. So it's another area that we perform a lot of procedures like communicating with the pension plan auditors, calpers, auditors. We obtain reports from them on how much the city have invested in the plans. We test the information submitted to those plans by the city to make sure that whatever census data provided to the plans are accurate and complete and a variety of other procedures. If we go to slide number eight, that discusses our auditor's report. We have issued an unmodified opinion on the city's basic financial statements, except for anything related to the housing authority. So RHA, RHA Red, RHA Properties, and RHA Housing Corporation. For those, the opinion is disclaimed. A disclaimer of opinion basically means that we were not able to give an opinion on those areas. The audit's opinion states that standards that we followed, which are the generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. An unmodified opinion means that we believe that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, that all estimates are reasonable, that all disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statements, and that all accounting policies have been consistently applied. Of course, this only applies to the city, not RHA, since we are disclaiming our opinion on RHA. If we move on to slide number 10. I wanted to summarize for you some of the numbers in the financial statements. So overall, I think the city had a good year. And I'm going to go in some of the details, but on slide number 10 is a summary of the city's assets over the last three years. Like with any other city we audit, the two largest assets are usually the cash and investments and the capital assets. I would say that you can see that there was increase in both cash and investments and capital assets. There are many reasons for those increase, but bottom line is that the results of operation in 2022 were positive for the city. There were increases in revenues, there were decreases in expenses, and that resulted in obviously increasing cash and so on. Also, the increase in receivable, this is really the result of implementing a new accounting standard relating to leases. So the city recognized 60 some million dollars in leases receivable on facilities that you're leasing to others, cellphone towers that you're leasing to others and so on. So that's for the asset side. Those were the two main increases or fluctuation. We go to slide number 11. That's the composition of the city's liabilities over the last three years. And like most cities, we have seen a reduction in net pension liability and the OPEB liability. Those are measured based on evaluation that was done in June 30, 2021. So they reflect the market performance as of June 30, 21. And for that, calpers had really good year, which resulted in reduction in the net pension liability. I would say this is probably the the biggest increase or decrease or change in the liabilities are the pension liability and the OPEB liability. So if we go to slide number 12. That's just looking at the city's net position, just taking total assets minus total liabilities. And I wanted to break down the equity into those categories to highlight to the city and the city council that within your net position, there are about 289 million that are not in a spendable form. Those are amounts that were invested in the city's assets and infrastructure, streets and roads and bridges and buildings and sidewalks and so on. So those are unlikely to ever become spendable unless you're able to sell your streets and sell your assets, which is obviously not very likely. Then you have a restricted amount, and this is about 117 million. And restricted means that there is a third-party legal restriction on them. So either those are unspent bond proceeds, unspent grant proceeds, gas tax, basically money, ARPA funds, money that have legal restriction on them, can only be spent for a specified purpose. And that leaves the city with unrestricted amount, which is normally the amount under the council control. This amount has been a large deficit for a long time. Currently is deficit 453 million, down from almost 600 million in 2020. Most of this is really the result of pension and OPEB liabilities that are basically the unfunded portion contribute significantly to those. So that's for the city's net position. If we go to slide number 13. This is looking at the city's revenues over expenses. Again, please keep in mind, this is a 30,000-foot view, so is combining all funds. It's not just looking at the general fund or any specific fund. This is really looking at all city funds, all city revenues minus all city expenses. You can see that clearly the trajectory is, there are significant increases year over year. I do want to caution you that that increase in 2022, a big part of it also has to do with having a negative pension expense, a very significant negative pension expense during fiscal year 2022. When calpers have significant gains and your pension liability go down. and your pension liability go down this much, normally that means that you had a negative pension expense. So that may make the numbers look that your revenues are way higher than your expenses. But it is really the fact that you had almost 25 or 30 million dollar negative pension expense. So that's a big factor of that. However, that doesn't change the fact that there were increases in revenues, for sure, in license, in utility users' tax, and property tax, and sales tax, and almost all revenues saw increases. So the combination of increases in revenues, negative pension expenses, is causing that going from 65 million to 122 million revenue over expenses. If we were to go to slide number 14, slide number 14 compared the net cost of service to tax revenues. So the net cost of service is the cost of running the city departments minus any revenues that those departments bring in on their own. So if we're looking at public safety, for example, we would look at how much grants they brought in, how much they charged the public for services they provided. And the idea is to see what is the net cost and whether tax revenues are sufficient to cover that net cost of service or not. For over the last three years, the tax revenues have been higher than the net cost of service. So that's definitely a good sign. However, the net costs of service are oftentimes reduced by, for example, the negative pension expense. So this year, you see that the net cost of service is almost 40 million dollars less than last year. What a really big part of that is the negative pension expense. So just wanted to to bring that to your attention. But nonetheless, over the last three years, the city's tax revenues were higher than the net cost of service. And that's definitely a good thing to have. If we were to move on to slide number 15, just really looking at the general fund. So also, the general fund made some improvements. We look at your fund balance that is not restricted, that is under the council control. And we compare that to annual expenditures. And the idea is to see how much can the city continue to pay bills or how long can the city continue to pay bills using existing fund balance? So city's been making improvements year over year. Currently, as of 2022, it's about four months. Your unrestricted fund balance in the general fund is about four months worth of expenditures. That's an improvement from three months last year and an improvement from two months the year before. Obviously, pension is something that you always have to keep in mind. It is going in the opposite direction in 2023. So I would expect the big swings in pension expense and contributions going forward. But this is the composition of the fund balance over the last three years and definitely improvement year over year. So wanted to just say.
Can you, can you please speak to a little bit about what we're expecting in the coming years related to CalPERS currently?
Sure. So I mentioned earlier that the numbers reported in the 2022 financials are really a year old. They're based on 2021 numbers coming from CalPERS. And 2021 was a very good year for CalPERS. They had, I believe, about 22 or 23% gains compared to their assumed 7.15% rate of return. 2022 year, they went from 22 or 23% gain to 7% loss. So there is about 30% swing that in the investments that you will see the impact of. In addition to that, the pension liability and the contributions that the city contribute to the to the plan are based on assumptions, and one of them is a discount rate. It's one of the most significant assumptions. Currently, it's at 7.15%. That's the assumption used in the 2022 financials. But that assumption has been reduced to 6.8 or yes, 6.8 or 6.9, something like that. So that will have a significant impact on your pension liability and on your future contribution, a negative impact. Basically, CalPERS is saying, we don't think we can earn that 7.15% going forward. So they are reducing it to 6.8 or 6.9. That means that they're anticipating that they're going to earn less money on your investments. And that means that they expect the city to make additional contributions in the future to make up for it. So definitely a significant item. And just happened that the year right before it, they had a really good year, and then the year right after it, it's not a very good year. So we anticipate 2023, you're going to see a big swing in those numbers, same like you've seen it this year. It almost went down your pension liability by almost 70 million dollars. So that was a big swing, and it's not going to be the case next year. So just wanted to bring that to your attention because even though it was a good year financially, but looking forward, obviously, there are probably some big increases relating to that. If we were to go to slide number 16, just talking about pension plans. And this is a summary of the city's contributions to the pension plans over the last three years. And on slide number 17 is the city's pension li- unfunded portion of the pension liability for the five plans that you had. And that's what I meant by the discount rate. So currently, the the middle row is the numbers reflected in the 2022 financials. Accounting standards require us to disclose to you what the liability would be if the discount rate is either increased or decreased by 1%. So you can see that significant impact that a 1% up or down will do to the liability. Luckily, there was no reduction by 1%, but the reduction was 0.25%. So still a big increase and will impact those numbers next year. We need to be free to move on to slide number 18. In addition to the pension plan, the city also have an OPEB plan, which are the retiree medical benefits. Actually, the city have two plans. On slide number 18 is a summary of the city's contributions to those plans over the last three years. And then on slide number 19 are the liabilities of the city under each plan. And again, showing you what the liability would be was a 1% increase or decrease in the discount rate. Currently, your liability is the middle row. And then finally, if we go to slide number 20, also regarding the OPEB plan, in addition to the discount rate, which is a significant assumption, the healthcare trend rate is also another significant assumption. It's how much healthcare premiums would be in the future. So we wanted to show you what your liability would look like if those healthcare trend rates are either increased or decreased by 1%. Seeing this, this completes my, the section about the numbers in the financial statements. The the last section of my presentation are the required communications as your independent auditors. So if we go to slide number 22, this highlights the different responsibilities between our firm and the city. Our responsibility is to issue an opinion on the city's basic financial statements. Part of doing that, we are responsible for evaluating the city's internal control over financial reporting, evaluating the city's compliance with laws and regulations, ensuring the city's financial statements are clear and transparent. And then finally, we are responsible for communicating with the governing body. Management have a lot of responsibilities in this process. Our audit does not relieve management from its responsibility. Our audit is done on a test basis. We don't look at every transaction. We have materiality thresholds. So even when we look at transactions, we don't look at every $5,000 transaction. We look at transactions that are higher in amounts. Also, there are limitations on any audit. We would not know if something occurred and never got recorded in the books. It's a lot easier to find something that was recorded but never happened. But something that did happen and never got recorded is much harder to find. So just wanted to just make you aware that our audit does not relieve management from the responsibility for the completeness and accuracy of the financial statements. We provide reasonable assurance, which should be a high degree of assurance, that those financials are materially accurate and complete. Management is also responsible for establishing and maintaining internal control over financial reporting, for making financial records available to us during the audit process. So really, the burden of proof is on management to substantiate account balances, to provide us evidence of those transactions and account balances. Management is also responsible for establishing and maintaining controls that will prevent and detect fraud, inform us of any known and suspected fraud, comply with laws and regulations, and then finally, take corrective action on any audit findings that we come up with. If we were to go to slide number 23, this address our independence. It is solely our responsibility to maintain our independence. We evaluate our independence constantly. We look at it from the type of service that we offer the city. We evaluate any additional service that we offer the city to determine whether it impair our independence or not. We also evaluate relationships. We circulate questionnaires to all our firm personnel, asking them to, we give them a list of our clients. We ask them to identify any direct or indirect relations with any client personnel, council, anything of that nature. We make sure that we remove those individuals from the audits that they may have conflict with. And then, of course, we also have to maintain our independence, our appearance of independence. So we are very careful about how we interact with management and not to be seen as maybe too close with management. You don't see us out having drinks or always having lunches and things like that. Not to say that this will impact our independence, but we just don't want also that appearance that maybe our independence is impaired. So we, as a firm, we don't really do that. We determined that we are independent from the city and therefore, we were in a position to issue our opinion. We believe that the audit was conducted within the timeframe, communicated to the city. And then at the bottom of the slide, it's just a listing of the new accounting standards that were implemented. Every year, there are new standards. I don't want to bother you with them. I bother management with them, I think enough. But the most significant one this year was 87, the first one listed. This is a new lease standard that really required the city to capture a lot of new leases that were not recorded before. For example, when you use, when you lease a space for a communication company to put a communication tower or a cellphone tower, that would be accounted for when you lease office space or you lease other facilities, like court facilities to others. So that standard focus on capturing those leases, those long-term leases and account for them was about 60-plus million or so. So it was significant for the city. If we go to slide number 24, just wanted to bring to your attention that some of the numbers in the financial statements are estimated numbers. So just wanted to highlight for you some of those estimated numbers. Obviously, the biggest one are the pension and OPEB, but also the useful life of capital assets depreciation and investment valuation. Also, some of the sensitive disclosure in the financials. I listed some of the notes that I feel have a lot of valuable information. If you want to learn more about how your pension liabilities are calculated, what are the actuarial assumptions that are being used, all of those, or what are the risks that your investments are exposed to? What are the ratings of the investments that you're holding? So these notes will provide you that information. So I feel that they're valuable to the reader of the financials. If we go to slide number 25, as far as difficulties encountered during our audit, we encountered no difficulties. Actually, it's been really pleasant working with management. We feel that staff are capable of preparing for the audit, responding to us. The quality of the information and the responses we get from them are good quality. So we're very satisfied with the interaction and the preparedness of the city. There were some adjustments that were made and some of them were considered to be immaterial by management. So we just wanted to highlight to you some of those immaterial adjustments that management decided not to record. And one of them was relating to the FEMA grant, where the city just incorrectly did not exclude matching portion when it reported those FEMA as grant revenues. So it was a small correction. It was not material, but we need to bring to your attention. No significant risk or exposure. We normally communicate with not just the city attorney, a lot of attorneys in this audit, asking them to confirm to us outstanding litigations, exposure. Most litigations do not require additional disclosure in the financial statements. They're oftentimes covered by insurance or by your self-insurance, but only the ones that we feel might have exposure and may not be covered that we would want to disclose it a little bit more. As far as disagreement with management, I'm pleased to say we had no disagreement with management. Again, I think that we were very pleased with the cooperation. If we go to slide number 26, so these are some of the deficiencies that we identified in internal control. So the city's financial condition is still an area of focus and concern for us, even though the results were positive this year because it was just only one year. And this is the first time that the city's fund balance is slightly above what the minimum requirement or the minimum threshold would be. So we're definitely keeping that on the radar and we're not removing it. If we see consistent improvement in the fund balance, and obviously, this is a matter that we can remove in the future. But for now, we have kept it. This is something that we have brought up for the last couple of years. We also noted some delays in the personnel action form submission and approval. And that sometimes resulted in maybe terminated employees, not getting terminated on time in the system and therefore, getting paid. And then the city having to go and try to recoup those funds by having receivables from some of these employees. So we just want to see improvement in preparing the personnel action forms timely and communicating them to the interested parties timely. Also, segregation of duties in payroll. We noted that the individuals who have the ability to set up employees or delete employees from the system also have the ability to run payroll. And they can also run payroll without having a time card approved in the system. So basically, somebody can set up an employee, run payroll, not having a time card, and still run payroll. Our concern is that there are no detailed review of payroll that is being done. And and we don't anticipate that somebody's going to go in and check every employee. It's just a lot of employees to check every pay period. But at least we would have liked to see like a report of changes that happened every pay period, new employees added, new rates changed, and somebody independent from the payroll process maybe checking those to make sure that, yes, this is a legitimate employee, this is a legitimate pay increase, and so on. So again, just, we didn't find any issues in payroll, by the way. It's just the way it's set up. It's just have some exposure, that the city can be exposed to some risk. But we didn't find any of those issues when we tested payroll. So just want to make sure that I highlight that. And then finally, the risk management. There are reports that comes from Ames, which is the company that handle claims. We are not aware that there are reviews of these reports as to the legitimacy of the billings. Finance get an invoice and they review the invoice and paid. But there is really, but finance wouldn't know whether those claims are actually legitimate, whether the amounts are accurate for each of those claims, something that we feel is probably risk management more. But we were not able to see a documented review of those reports when they come in. So that was also another observation of ours. Those were all the observations we had on slide number 27. Just a few other items that wanted to let you know that we normally obtain a representation letter from management before we finalize our audit. That representation letter is signed by the city manager and by the finance, acknowledging to us that they have disclosed to us all known facts, that they are not aware of any fraud that was not disclosed to us, that they have recorded all transactions, that they have reviewed and taken responsibilities for the financial statements. that they have reviewed and taken responsibilities for the financial statements, in addition to many other representations. Uh, we're not aware of any significant accounting or auditing matters for which management have seeked another or a second opinion. Uh, uh, and also, other than our engagement letter and the representation letter, we had no other communications with management. There were no material uncertainties relating to events and conditions, and we have not become aware of any instance of fraud or illegal acts that were not reported to us by management. Uh, my, my last slide is just a listing of all the new standards coming your way, uh slide number twenty-eight. Uh, like I said, I'm not gonna bother you with those. I normally have discussions with management about how those are gonna impact the city. Uh, but that completes my presentation. I definitely appreciate the opportunity to provide service to the city and I'm more than happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much.
May I, can I just please uh speak to slide number twenty-six? Um, so I appreciate that the Dowling Associates pointed these matters out for, uh pertaining to payroll and risk management. Um, just for the good of the, the, the order, I do want to um acknowledge and thank uh HR for the work they've done to uh develop a man, a payroll manager position. Um, that's a position that we're currently recruiting for. Also, um, Nikki Mastay has been working closely with the payroll department to implement new uh procedures. And we also have been working with the city attorney's office to conduct an audit uh of Ames. And so we'll be reporting back to you on those activities. And lastly, Henry Gardner has um been on site here and available to assist Jerry Mubin and Antonio starting this week. And we'll continue to have him available in the coming weeks as we're um working on our recruitments. So just wanted to share that for the, for the good of the order. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, council members, uh, Sahela Bana had questions earlier, so go ahead.
Thank you. I start from the end. So I didn't get the first item on slide twenty-six, city's financial condition. Could you repeat, please? Oh. Thank you. So uh, it's slide twenty-six, the first one, city's financial condition. Could you explain it again, please?
Just uh, over the last uh couple of years, we had concerns about the city's fund balance and whether it's sufficient uh fund balance. I think at some point it was less than two months, uh worth of expenditures. Uh, normally, uh, uh, having a fund balance, uh, a healthy fund balance is uh indication of how uh healthy and solvent the city is. Uh, so our comment was about uh just our concern about having a low fund balance.
Now, how, what is the norm?
Well, so the norm uh minimum would be two to four months. So you're just reaching that minimum of two to four months. That's what the Government Finance Officers Association recommend. But they don't recommend that this should be your target. They recommend that you should not go below that two to four months. Uh, of course, we, we see cities that have significantly more. I mean, I'm not gonna say, I, I won't be able to say what is the magic number that you should be at because obviously there are different priorities that city may feel that are more important than establishing uh a fund balance or built on fund balance. Uh, but it works the same way as our personal finances.
So educate me, what do we do with that? Do we put it in reserve? What, what is that two to four months worth?
Yeah, the city have established reserves that, that for different purposes.
So at all times, we need to have two to four months uh of funds?
So from an audit perspective, anytime I see a city who have less than two to four months, we, we get concerned about the city's liquidity, about the city's ability to pay bills on time and, and so on. Uh, so in those two to four months, uh, fund balance, the city may have already set up certain reserves for different purposes, but we really look at it in total fund balance because those reserves, the city can change their mind. Like if you have reserve for economic development, for example, and then a disaster happened, you can say, okay, well, we're gonna have to use that reserve for other purposes. So we really look at it from the total unrestricted fund balance, the fund balance that is under your control. We want to make sure that at least you have two to four months worth of expenditures in your fund balance. How you divide it, how do you, what's reserve uh you set up? That's really up to the city. We just look at it in totality.
Thank you. So in our budget, what item is it under?
Currently, this is under reserves and um we will be um seeking some input from the Dowling Associates to look at, uh, as well as um other stakeholders regarding our fiscal policies to see what the city council is comfortable with as um our revenue and expenses continue to grow over the next five years and for those projections. Um, and so I think this conversation is really helpful because it's the, the third-party, non-biased suggestions for the city council to take under advisement. But currently, um, we have in excess of twenty percent in our reserves and um those numbers are not finalized, though, until the ACFIR is completed. So the budget is just like an estimate for your household. And the way I think of the ACFIR, it's like when you file your personal income tax statement, your personal taxes, then you know where you really landed. So that's, that's how I would, I would urge the council to look at it, is that the budget process we go through, again, just estimates. And this, the ACFIR that's done by an outside CPA firm is like when we file our taxes.
Okay, thank you. So back to our financial condition. You mentioned CalPERS swinging uh funds. What other things we made? The, I, I didn't see any projection or any advice or word of caution in your report um in addition to what you verbally suggested about CalPERS. Anything else with like maybe recession, property taxes going down? What, any word of wisdom for financial condition?
Well, my role, and I was actually just talking with management about that. My role is to report on history, is, is what happened in the past and whether the city reported the results of what happened in the past.
Okay, no projection.
I, I, it would not be my area of expertise to project what's gonna happen in the future and uh I mean, obviously, there are certain things that, for example, CalPERS, we know that they're telling everybody your contribution is gonna go up. We know that they changed the discount rate. So these things, we, we definitely alert our clients that you should expect increases in the future. However, when the city wants to know really what you should expect as it relates to pension, you normally talk with your actuary, who will then tell you what the true impact would be of those changes. Uh, we just report on the history.
Got it, thank you. And did you have any role in the state audit or did you read it, any comments regarding that? Maybe you mentioned and I missed it, sorry.
Uh, no, so we don't have a role in the state audit. Normally, we would uh read the audits when they're completed to see what issues they had. I did have conversation with the state auditors. Uh, that's obviously uh when regulators reach out to us, asking us questions, we, we share with them as, as much as we're allowed to about, they asked us questions about our risks and concerns and things like that, and they use that information in their audits. Um, but that's as, as far as our, we were involved with that audit.
Thank you. On a slide eleven, can you explain what deferred inflows of resources is in general?
Sure. Um, so trying to think of this way to, uh, deferred inflow of resources is um basically an acquisition of I don't want to use accounting terms and I'm trying to just use day-to-day terms. Uh, it is something similar to liabilities, but it is only for accounting purposes. So for example, uh, the city may have uh earned revenues, but they were not collected within a reasonable amount of time. So those amounts would be reported into deferred inflow of resources. Uh, pension, for example, when CalPERS had those big uh gains in their investments, uh, in order to smooth the effects of these changes, the city does not recognize all those earnings and investment all in the same year. But they actually get parked into that deferred inflow account and then they get recognized over a five-year period to, to minimize the swings. And even with that, you're still gonna see swings, but uh, but this is where the deferred inflow would be used for, uh, to, to really uh basically, things that you may have either acquired in the period, but they belong to future periods. So you park them in that deferred inflow and then you recognize them over those future periods.
Got it, thank you. And on the slide twelve, unrestricted is negative? I don't get it.
Yeah, so i- if you look at slide eleven, it will probably um uh highlight a little bit. So, so, so I don't want to underst- understate that. Uh, having a negative unrestricted basically means that that, that the city's unrestricted assets minus the liabilities that would be paid out of those assets is a negative four hundred and some million dollars. Uh, I can't say that every city we audit is like that. There are definitely cities that are that these numbers are positive. Uh, but what I want to also highlight is that the big majority or the, the majority of this number is made out of the pension liability, the OPEB liability, which I think adds up to a little over three hundred million of that deficit that are basically long-term liabilities that would be paid over time. Uh, so you may not have the resources now, but the assumption is the city continue to collect revenues, continue to pay down those liabilities. Um, but that's what, that's the main reason why you have those deficits. But I do want to highlight that this is not the standard. We, you're not the only one who have deficit, but definitely we have a lot of cities that don't have those deficits.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question. Can, should I continue or should I let others ask? Okay, um, honestly, slide fifteen, I didn't get it.
Yeah, so slide fifteen is just focusing on the general fund. And we focus on the fund balance of the general funds. Fund balance is the assets minus the liabilities of the general.
The reserves we were talking about and you calculate that, then it grew from two to
Exactly.
four months.
So accounting standards require us to break down the, the fund balance into different categories. Uh, the first one is called committed fund balance, and that requires a council action. So it requires a council resolution saying we are committing this revenue source for this purpose or this fund balance for this purpose. It becomes binding and the only way to undo that is to issue another resolution, basically diverting the resources for some other purpose. The assigned fund balance is more controlled by management, by city management, not by the council. And uh, the assigned fund balance are just how management allocate the fund balance into different purposes. Uh, those normally are less binding because they do not require the council involvement. So there's definitely more flexibility into moving things around in those assigned fund balance. And then the unassigned is any amount that was not committed by council or assigned by management. Uh, so I, we just wanted to kind of highlight the changes that occurred in, in the different categories, like the committed categories. For example, committed categories saw a big de- decrease because in twenty-twenty-one, council committed amounts to compensate, for one-time compensation for employees. And uh, those amounts have been paid. So, so that this year, there are very, very amount, very little amount left in that category. Um, so it's just basically uh changes like that. If, I don't know if you want more detail as to why the changes occurred?
No, that, that's good. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member Jimenez and then council member, I mean, I'm sorry, vice mayor McLaughlin.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, for doing the audit. I see like, I think like we need to highlight the, the good things and the things that we need to improve. Um, I want to make a point that the city most recent uh moved to eliminate interest swaps um attached to suspension obligation and bonds. And this has been a good thing that at end result give us upgraded rate, ratings upgraded, right? Um, and according to our advisors, um, we are saving eighty-four million dollars over the life of that deal. Um, so um, you mentioned like also that property taxes continue to see steady growth from five percent increase from last year. Um, um, one of the things that uh you mentioned there is um that the, i- it went the, there was growth in asset value in the county of eight point fifteen percent for secure property taxes. Um, and according to the county, the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three assessment roll is the highest today in Contra Costa County history. But I, I wanted to, I have a couple of questions. So one is a- around that, do you anticipate the increase in property taxes to continue in next few years?
Again, I, I would not be able to comment on the future. Uh, I just comment on the history and whether the city recorded its property taxes correctly or not. But I would not have the knowledge to anticipate or project it.
So let's talk about the reserves because it's something, so um, one of the things that um they already mentioned is the city's general fund contingency reserve policies to the minimum fifteen percent to the general fund next year's budget appropriations, right? Is, is budgeted, so um, this fifteen percent is based on budgeted expenditure of one hundred and eighty-eight million dollars is is that, that correct, is over the budget, right?
Your, your twenty-twenty-two general fund expenditures were a hundred and sixty-seven million. So yeah, probably in the ballpark.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, to make sure that like, because um when we use budgeted versus actual, it gives you, you different numbers. Uh, for instance, um if we use the budget instead of actual expenses, our reserve was twenty-four point three percent. And if we had used the actual expenditures, uh, or, or, or it will have been twenty-six point eight percent. So I want like my, my question to you is um a- a- and I, I want to get this for the public to know that um is we are using budgeted numbers, we are getting different results than is we are a- a- using the actuals. And you like, so I want to know like what had been the, the numbers that you are using to calculate and give us this a report about right now, we have um four months of research.
Uh, I don't use budgeted numbers, of course. I use the actual numbers. I think just reiterating what city manager mentioned earlier that wh- when you don't have the actual numbers, because either the year is not over and the audit is not completely used budgeted numbers temporarily until the final numbers are, are available. And then obviously, if any adjustments are needed, then there should be adjustments done. Uh, I think it's pretty standard that cities will look at budget to anticipate what the reserves would be. And then once the final numbers are in, they will make adjustments to, to figure out what the final reserve numbers are. But it is kind of an, always an ongoing process, like we finish our twenty-twenty-two audit, but you're also projecting for twenty-twenty-three and what's gonna be for twenty-twenty-three. So it's just always gonna be, the budget is looking a few months ahead and the audit is just catching up to hopefully confirm what, what you budgeted or what you estimated. Hopefully not, no major fluctuations between what you budgeted and uh what the actual results were.
I, I think like this is um in- important because sometimes uh we budgeted expenditure were ten percent greater than the actual expenditures. So I'm glad that you say that uh right now you are using the budgeted uh number expenditure, but is going to be the actual. And I want to make a point because I think like a city council, we want the numbers to reflect what we actually have in instead of what we are assuming uh we are having, uh because it gives us different numbers.
Well, of course, you, you always have to look at, look back at the actual numbers and make sure that you're not way off in, in your estimates. Of course, uh, if, if, if you budgeted that you're gonna end up the year, you're gonna end the year with a hundred million dollar in fund balance. And somehow you ended with only forty or fifty, and that's a that's a big problem. Uh, but I I mean, I'm not anticipating that the fluctuations would be that significant. But of course, you always use budget because that's the best available information you have at the time. But you always have to also look at what the final numbers were and see where you close or not. You need to make other adjustments or not.
Okay, thank you. Because I I think like for me is um the G F O A recommend to have two months of reserves. Um, like uh recommend using regular general fund operating revenues. Um, uh of like and be able to pay two months of expenses. Um, you say like it's right now good that we have at least uh four months. Uh, my question to you is when like we, when does it stop? Like when is. Uh, having more reserves good or not like because I also and and I am going in this situation. Because we as city council are in a position where we had to decide what is a good reserve. But also how much money we can use to serve the community.
Yeah.
And and that is a dilemma that we face in 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 some ways. Um, so my question to you is like, well, the G F O A recommends two months, right? Because it's like two months of expenditures. Uh, we have four months. So when do we stop? So you don't say, oh, the financial uh in the the stability or the health of of the city. Uh, financially is 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 not a problem like, you know.
I I I think every city have priorities and different risks that they will take. It will be very difficult for me to say this is when you stop. There are some cities that have literally two years worse, like I audit the city of Dublin, for example. They literally have over two years worth of expenditures in their fund balance. Uh, but they also have different priorities and different projects and, you know. Uh, I'm not in any way suggesting that's what you should aim for. So when to to stop building reserves and to put more money into different purposes is really something that I would never be able to. Uh, comment on because I don't know what the community priorities are and I think every city is different. What we look at is whether you are below the minimum that even just paying your basic bills may be a problem. Uh, but once we feel that this is not a risk, how much the city accumulate in reserves? What your feel about the future and how prepared you want to be, that's that's really out of our scope to.
Okay.
Uh, to be commenting on that or making recommendations on that.
So I have uh two more questions. One is about the municipal sewer fund. And other is about the O P A liability. So I want to go so. That can you explain in more detail the four point seven million in non-operating expenses, expenses, expenses in the municipal sewer ban, sewer fund? Um, the report states that the amount represents interest and swap expenses incurred on various wastewater debt issues. Um, are there are these swap expenses for issuing debt to pay termination fees? Because I I got confused when I I saw the swaps um in 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 that and reading that. Because uh I thought that we long, we no longer have interest rate swap on our debt portfolio.
Uh, I believe the, you know, the twenty twenty two financials are not showing those that you have swaps. I don't recall if they were terminated during fiscal year twenty twenty two. If that was the case, you will see some. At least leftover from from those transactions. Twenty two, twenty three. Um. Okay.
Are you talking about successor agency or the city?
Okay. Uh, I mean, I'll have to take a look. I I don't recall off the top of my head what the composition of that line item is unless management know. But I'm assuming you're looking at a number in the financial statements, none of.
Page twelve.
Page twelve.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't, I don't know what uh.
Yeah, so you mentioned something about um. That the amount represent interest and swap expenses incur incurred on various waste wastewater debt issues. So maybe look at that more closely.
I mean, interest expense on on bonds, on debt in general will always be reported as non-operating expense. In sewer or water or any type of enterprise activity. So it will.
Yeah, but you mentioned swap into expenses.
Uh, so swap and and again, uh, excuse me if I don't recall if it was in twenty twenty three or twenty twenty two. But swap, usually there are a a a counterparty and there are interests being paid. To or from that counterparty that that offsets the interest. That's the whole idea of the swap. So that is, as long as the swap is outstanding, there are payments being that being made to to that party, depending on where the interest rate is.
Okay. Mayor, if I may, so for the last, so that was for, if I may, uh, on page twelve, the second bullet point from the bottom when I'm, if I would, I'm hearing correctly. Council member Jimenez is you'd like clarity on that bullet point. Can we follow up with the council and we'll send an email regarding that one?
That will be great. That will be great. And I am looking at that because uh one of the things that they say out is said to uh like, look at us. It was the negative fund balance that we have. Um, and uh, we we clear soon, right? And but since two thousand and ten, we have spent over thirty six point five million in general fund money. Eliminating negative fund balance. Um, uh, for and and this is just for three recovery, uh, recovery funds that are supposed to pay for themselves like. Fund ten fifty, ten fifty one and ten fifty three. Um, so one of the things that I I would like is uh what are uh what are the recommendations? For how we are like to avoid to have more negative fund balance um that are are just really. Get uh, we had to get money from the general fund to really uh. Make sure that we don't like we clear these, but every year we clear these and then the next year we had more negative funds.
Um, again, I think you're referring to some special revenue funds that are maybe.
Like the cost recovery funds.
Okay. Um, I mean, obviously, uh. Fund balance should not be negative under normal circumstances. So anytime it goes negative, that means that. Either the city is not charging enough. Uh, and that's why the the cost recovery is not basically recovering the cost. Uh, normally those charges would come from the general fund and other funds, other enterprise funds. And if the city set up the proper charges, the proper amounts, then you wouldn't end up with that. Uh, with that negative fund balance. But I also want to caution that, you know, some of these. Funds may actually be in by nature, general fund operations and cities just putting them into separate funds. So having a negative fund balance there on something that is supposed to be a general fund operation to start with. And then the general fund is subsidizing it, it's basically kind of like cancel each other out. Um.
I will, I would like to, um, I'm sorry, uh, city manager, um, I will let you. But I I I was asking, I was going to ask you like, I think like we is is something that um I would like for the city council. To to have a presentation about how what is the city proposing to address these concerns about the fa- the negative funds? Um, so we can start looking at like what are the 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 issues? And we start uh um really making sure that these negative funds are no becoming like are stopping. Or and we uh have some um. Um, solutions. Um, so maybe um city manager, um, that will be something that I I would love to request to just have. And I like um a presentation or um explanation. How the city is proposing to address the the concern raised in the state audit about potential ongoing negative fund balances.
Yes, that's in our current uh work plan and we'd be happy to have a presentation on that. Um, for example, one of the the new best practices that we've implemented specifically is regarding the, there was a large negative fund balance. The largest one was regarding the Richmond Housing Authority. So we went through a comprehensive process with HUD. And we went through a process to confirm what those liabilities were. And the city council voted to absorb and write that off. And subsequently now what happens annually, there is a proposed um general fund subsidy. That comes before the city council for consideration and concurrently with the uh city's budget. Um, or shortly thereafter. And so that's a an area where we've increased transparency. We've we've said we unfortunately, the housing authority cannot operate based on the revenue provided by the federal government. So we asked the city council and R H A board members in both capacities to provide a subsidy. And so what we probably need to do is look at um the level of service that the council wants to provide. And if it's really um possible, for example, like in code enforcement or in engineering, to actually have those departments fully cost recoverable. And if they can't, then we need to just allocate a general fund subsidy. So then that way we're not running into those negative cash balances uh on an annual basis. But more importantly, we need to be thoughtful about our grant reporting and following up there. And so we're really excited that we have the the biggest area where we have most grants is really in public works. And so having those new engineers and C I P staff, capital improvement manager staff there will help shore that up.
Yeah, and updating the fee schedules and so forth.
Yeah, Antonio is working on updating the fee schedules uh annually uh with all of the departments.
So I had two more questions. Um, one is uh just following up with the Richmond Housing Authority Authority. When will the city complete the is individual audits for R H A? Um, so that we can get up up to date um and we can access uh assess assess the current financial status of the R H A.
Gabino and Rita are on via Zoom and they have done a tremendous job working on that. We were years in arrears and we just completed one and there's another one nearly complete. So Rita or Gabino, are you available to comment? K C R T, can you allow someone from Zoom to comment at this juncture? Thank you.
Hello, uh, this is Gavin Aralondo, um, interim uh director for the Richmond Housing Authority and Rita is also here. Um, who also provide an update. Um, so for the Richmond Housing Authority ever since, um, sorry. The lights went out here. Um, ever since uh we started working on the financial audits, a lot of work had to be done in the front end. Um, there was bank reconc- bank reconciliations that needed to be done, files that needed to be uh found. Um, related to all the audit uh requests to complete the audits. Um, and currently Rita could provide a a good update related to twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen.
Good evening, Mayor Martinez and council members. Um, just a quick update on the audits. Um, we've been working with our um previous auditors with Mays and Associates. And right now, at this point, we've completed seventeen. Um, and also completed the step that's submitted to HUD. Um, so seventeen is fully completed. Eighteen is also completed. Um, the financials are completed. Um, but we're working with um a consultant, Tony Ma. We brought him back on. And he's been helping with submitting the um, the HUD portion. So um. As that's going on, um, we're simultaneously working on the twenty nineteen. And there are some open items um that still need to be worked on, files that need to be located. And as Gabino said, some bank reps that need to be um revised and updated with the current um completion of twenty eighteen. So um, we are nearly completed with using Mays and then we can move on with um Bedawi. Uh, starting from the twenty twenty audits. Um, the goal is to have twenty nineteen fully completed within this calendar year. Um, of course, sooner would be ideal, um, but we are trying to be realistic and given um restrictions with time from Mays as well. Um, but hopefully, uh, we can be working with Bedawi um by the end of this year.
Thank you so much. And and I just wanted to say thank you so much, uh, city manager and all the staff. Because this has been a a big undertaking and I I really want to um appreciate the transparency. Um, and the hu- huge work because it was a mess. And now you are cleaning it. Um, so thank you. Uh, and my last question is, you you are looking at me. I like it. Uh, the O P A liability. And I I think I I want, this is another concern concerned uh for the state auditor. And and it, I just wanted to understand a a little bit. How could uh the the projection and the numbers change dramatically from one year to another? Um, first, I just made some notes here and I want, because this is really complicated for me as well. So let me say, I understand that an increase in investment income means we might need to pay less. Or an increase in expected investment return or or assumption will change what we are required to pay each year. However, I what I am struggling with is how differences between expected and actual experiences. For changes in premiums and assumed claims costs vary so much from year to year. I went and I look at the other offers or offers before. So in two thousand and seventeen, um, no reported difference. In two thousand and eighteen, less by two point eight million. In two thousand and nineteen, no reported difference. In two thousand and twenty, uh, twenty eight point seven million less. In two twenty twenty one, four hundred and a hundred and forty thousand less. Uh, and in two thousand and twenty twenty, uh, eleven point nine million less. Um, so I my question to you, if it's possible to forecast such difference to the penny in some year. How could claims cost be off by over twenty million? Are these predictable to some degree? I just wanted to ask these questions uh and and for the for the public to understand that. If we if if we had this social difference, that means um increase in our liability in O P A. And I just wanted to understand like the variation is so much in some years, so.
Well, unfortunately, I'm not an actuary, but I I obviously, to a certain extent, we also rely on some of the actuaries' work. We are required to evaluate the actuaries' experience, make sure that they are familiar with this concept and with government plans and and so on. But in general, actuaries, every now and then, they would look back at what they assumed and versus what actually happened. And they will make adjustments for uh actual experiences. And sometimes those adjustments may be like, for example, calpers. They 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 do an experience study every few years. And so when those studies come out, they may have some significant changes. So it may not necessarily be every year. I I I'll have to look, uh, I I mean, obviously, some of the years you mentioned, I wasn't even the auditor here. So I'll I'll have to look at, you know, what the actuary is identifying. Normally, the actuary in the report. They will detail what the uh the difference in experience were, like what exactly uh were they? Uh, either change in. More mortality or whatever those those changes are. But I I can't, I I have to look at the actual study for each year and see what the specific year involved.
Yeah, and and I wanted to finish with saying is, um, I am looking at that because an actual liability of twelve million less than forecasted. Represent thirty point two percent of our net O P A liability at the start of the year. That counted against us in the state audit and will continue to do so. So I just want to understand how these numbers are being forecasted to ensure that the city's financial status is accurately represented. And to see like how it is because um if if we don't represent it well. Uh, it's totally a different story that is being told about the financial um condition of the of the city.
An actuary is like an auditor. They also, if you. They also, if you, was there actuary study, an actuary report that is signed by them? They follow their own actuary standards that set guidance on how they set assumptions and how they review them and look at them. Our role is to make sure that this actuary that the city is using is a reputable actuary, that they are familiar with government plans. And then we review some of their assumptions to make sure that they are not completely unreasonable. So for example, if we see that your actuary is using 20% rate of return, we're obviously going to ask questions. How can you be assuming 20% when everyone is using 6% or 7%? But obviously, there are some reliance by us and the city on also the accuracy of the actuary. But actuary studies are estimates by nature, so they can never be 100% exact. But obviously, it's a very legitimate question when when the changes in experience are very significant, that you would want to understand why we have.
We can follow up. Yeah, we can follow up.
We can follow up because it's not just about the assumptions, so I will follow up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions and it's in line with some of the questions that have been asked, but slightly different here. So first of all, the 32.58% of the percentage of the total expenditures that are in what we call reserves, you're saying is four months. And so the budgeted amount, I don't remember it being 32.5%. It was more like 20% or somewhere along that line. So along the lines of from what was budgeted to what was the actual amount of expenditures, and this is more for the city manager. I'm guessing, and tell me if I'm correct there, that some of the the projected amount of expenditures were higher than the actual expenditures due to the fact that we have vacancies that were difficult to fill. Like many cities are having vacancies that are difficult to fill. And we're now filling them and hoping to catch up, although we may still have challenges. We need to work within our means.
Yes, so the main thing that happened that, so first, we did start quantifying the vacancy rate in the budget. We, for this fiscal year that we're currently in, we anticipated 6% at approximately 8.3 million. And so in the coming weeks, we'll continue to evaluate that and report out to council on how we're doing on hiring. We're trying to hire and fill positions in a thoughtful way and will continue to do so. So we actually had three things that all occurred concurrently. We had a decrease in expenditures, an increase in revenue, and then we also had the swaps that sunset. And so when you send, so all of those things concurrently put us, at least from my perspective, and obviously, I respect our auditor because that's their job, put us in a much better situation. But historically, we haven't had the 20% reserves or the two to four months reserve. This is a new phenomenon, so I really think the council should, you know, all of you should pat yourselves on the back because you're doing a great job of making sure that we have good fiscal policies. And so what I think we're going to need to do over the next year is continue to evaluate what the council's priorities are around expenditures, right? Because I keep telling all of you, I would love to build a new library, that's really great, like this council chambers, right? And how many staff we can afford through our workforce analysis and through all of that. And what is actually happening with the economy, right? Like, none of us have a crystal ball. These regional banks, I'm constantly checking to see what's going on because none of us have a crystal ball. So we just want to be prepared because we want to have continually to provide good, high-quality service for Richmond residents. And that includes things like having the library open on Saturdays and recreation centers. So all of that will be coming to you as part of the upcoming budget processes as well as with mid-year next week.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I guess what I want to ask again, going back on the same point, city manager. So in the 2122 fiscal year budget, we accounted for a certain percentage of vacancies. And was that not accounted for in the 2020, 2021 fiscal year budget?
I would have to go look back at the administrative record, but historically, we haven't accounted for vacancies at the rate. And with the two previous city managers, there was not a lot of hiring. And so we've had for a while, right? And so that's why we're ramping up now because there was bent up demand for us to hire. So we can get back to you with those, more of those specifics. But it wasn't a clear assumption in the budget, like we did this last year, where we were very explicit in how we were going to reallocate those funds. So you would know what we were anticipating.
Great, great. So this is for the auditor. So you mentioned how calpers in 2022, that's the 2021/22 fiscal year. Okay, so in that fiscal year, there was a 7.15% return on calpers investments. Is that correct?
That was the assumed return. The actual return was over 20 plus percent.
Was over 20, okay. And in 20, so for this year, the assumption is 6.8%.
6.8 or 6.9.
Okay, so how, how much does, like, that difference? What does that amount to? I mean, in actual numbers? I mean, I guess it depends on.
An actuary will be able to run those numbers in their model to tell you what the actual impact would be. I think calpers may have been communicating to agencies what they should anticipate as far as increases. But again, it's the assumed versus the actual. So actuaries always have an assumed rate. That was 7.15 in the fiscal year we just finished auditing. It would be 6.8 or 6.9 in fiscal year 2023. The actual return was 22 or so percent in the fiscal year we just finished auditing. In the fiscal year 2023, it's actually a loss of 7%.
So so far?
Well, I mean, well, not so far because fiscal year 2023 is based on 2022 numbers for calpers. So they're always one year behind. So what we're reporting on is really, what you're seeing in your financial statements is how calpers done up to June 30, 2021. So next year, in your 2023 audits, your pension would be based on 2022 calpers results.
That's right. So you're saying that the assumption for 2023 is 6.8%, but the actual is at the, what you have said, and you said it's not at this point because it's already determined, is a deficit.
Yeah, it's a loss of seven, around 7%.
Okay, so can you, so for when we get our budget going forward for 2023, 24, is this something we should be cognizant of and trying to remedy and balance and all that?
Absolutely. I think I saw an item here about GovInvest or something. I mean, the city uses, there are software that model for you, those changes and the impacts in the future. There are also your actuaries that will be able to run these numbers through their model and tell you what you should expect as far as increasing contributions or changes in your liabilities and so on. So there are tools to do that, but I wouldn't know what, I know that there will be increases, but I wouldn't be able to quantify them.
So in this chart, though, on the page, on slide 16, so that factors in the calpers investment. Is that correct? So for 2023, we, in our minds at least, should figure that we're going to have that negative 7%. Or does that not factor in at all, these numbers?
So calpers, not only that they're behind one year on reporting the results, but your actual contributions are based on even an older valuation. So your actual contribution that you're seeing here on slide 16 for fiscal year 2022, they were, most likely, they were prepared based on, I want to say, fiscal year 2020 valuation. So they're even older. So when the markets and the assumptions change, it will take a couple of years for to see that hitting your contributions.
Okay.
That's why we always say that cities are impacted about two years, three years after the rest of the economy is because there's a delay. But we'll be building all of this into our five-year projections for the council's consideration.
Okay, and then I just have a final statement, which is just to highlight what the city manager said in terms of the state of the economy and the recent Silicon Valley bank crash and New York Signature Bank. And globally, there were some other banks. So economists are saying that this is just the tip of the iceberg. So I really think that when we think about the future, we really need to figure that we live in, we're living in some really dire financial periods. And I think it's not the city that should be seen as problematic in all this, but rather the national economy, which has a dominating, the US national economy, which has a dominating effect on the global economy. And I think we see a lot of failures happen in terms of this economy that trickles down to cities. So we have to do the best we can within our budgetary means. But we should also recognize that the problems are, in my view, a very unjust financial structure nationally and dominating globally that doesn't serve the vast majority of people, sadly. And we're trying to make ends meet and serve our low-income population. And so we have those challenges at hand. And I'm just hoping we all can work very hard to meet them for the benefit of our community.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Are there any other comments? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I have a quick question between slide 11 and slide 18. So in slide 18, we have the OPEB contributions from the city. In 2021 was 10.5 million and 2022 was 11.9 million. So we gave a little bit more contribution in 2022 than in 2021. And then if I look at slide 11 under the financial statements for the net OPEB liability, and I'm hoping you can help me, I know that I'm missing something here in the puzzle. But in 2021, our liability is more than in 2022. But at the other slide, it shows us paying more in 2022 than in 2021. So one question is to try to figure out the difference of the two, see what piece of the puzzle I'm missing there.
I mean, I'll have to go back and look. Again, the contribution to a plan is normally made out of two components, what we call the normal cost and the amortization of the unfunded liability. So the normal cost is what benefits were earned during that fiscal year. And the recommendation is usually to contribute that in addition to a part of the unfunded liability being amortized. So the normal cost can vary depending on, basically, if you had new employees or employees that just became eligible to participate in those plans, that it can increase the normal cost. But without me going to those actuary study to see what the impact is. But also keep in mind that those actuarially determined contributions, they're also, same like with calpers, they're normally determined ahead of time. So they are determined maybe a year or two prior to the actual contributions to tell the city, okay, this is how much you should be contributing to the plan. So the actual results can be different. And they're normally, if there are adjustments that are needed, they would be caught in the future contributions. So I can't give you like a very specific answer as to why, without me going back to those actuary study to see exactly what they were, the reason why they had those increased in contributions. But it is really a lot of factor that goes into it, the investment rate of return. And again, they always have to give you those required contributions ahead of time. So the city have time to make them. So they're usually based on information that is a little bit older. And in the case of calpers, it's two years older. Usually with OPEB, it's less because you control the actuary more. Versus with calpers, they use their own actuary, so you don't really have any control over it. But still, they are looking ahead, they're giving you contributions that you need to do a year from now. So it's based on information that they had at that time. And this information, the actual results may have been different.
And thank you for that. And will you mind reminding me, the data, when was this data acquired and put together?
I want to see the, so with OPEB, you actually don't have to have an evaluation done every year. It's every other year. Calpers is different because calpers does evaluation every year. So you always have a new number every year. With OPEB, you don't have to, it's every two years. So there's a likelihood that actuary determined contribution were based on a valuation that was done two years ago. And then you stick with it for two years and then you get a new valuation after two years that may look at, look back at what was done and then make changes and change the contributions, increase them or decrease them and so on. So it's every two years for the OPEB, every year for only the calpers plans that you would have in actuary.
Thank you. And then I was wondering, just because of the calpers releases their rates six months prior to the year. All right, so in June, they release them for January. So for the 2022 calendar year, they would have released it in 2021. So now we're.
When you say rates.
The premium, right? So this is the OPEB, so this is the medical premiums. So not looking at the other, not looking at calpers, I'm looking at Pemca, the medical premium. So they released them six months prior to January. So I'm just trying to figure out how it got brewed into these numbers.
No, so the valuation is really have to do with the actuary themselves. So it's not necessarily the premiums, but it's what we call the census data. So every two years, the actuary will actually do accounts or will get account of all the participants in the plan, all the city employees, and will calculate the liability based on that census count, based on those number of employees. Then the following year, they wouldn't do that again. Because that valuation, that census is good for two years. So they would base everything based on that count. And then two years after that, they will do another count. And if that count have changed, then you will see the impact of that.
So when was that count? Was that count in 2022, looking at two years back?
So I'll have to check. I don't recall off the top of my head, but every two years. I don't remember when was the last one.
So they get to know, because we know that calpers medical plans will be increasing every single year. So as we're, I'm shocked that the number went down in 2022, when premiums have always gone up. And if the city contribution stays the same, the premiums go up, then that means our contribution percentage rise has gone up as well.
That.
And so when Kaiser went down, then that impacted the city's overall contribution because it's all based on the Kaiser rate. But historically, it has increased up. But we can certainly look through the administrative record and get back to you with that answer.
Thank you.
Also, investment performance will impact. So even if the rates go up, but if the investments in the plan do well, your contribution will go down even if the rates go up.
Okay, thank you. No other further questions. Thank you.
Are the other questions from the council?
I have another, but if there is public, I will.
I I have another, but if if there is public, I will ask it after the public comments.
Okay, let's let's open up the floor for public comment. Do we have any public comments?
We do not have any speakers in the chambers and we do not have any hands raised.
All right, then I'll open the floor for, uh, comments from the council.
So I I had one question and and it's about, so they stay out it, um, talks about. The the special funds or I don't know how they call it, I I totally forget right now, but, uh, special funds that we have that instead of paying directly to calpers. Or directed, I don't know, like for OPE, we have, um. That, uh, we we have our own funds, special funds for that. Um, some of the things that they stay out and say that is. It will be better, um, if we do the direct payments to calpers or do the direct payments, um. Uh, because maybe the high risk is that like, one of the good things about us having it. For ourselves is that we can do investment and to have better return. But a- a- at the same time, it's higher risk if these in the these, we don't receive this return. And I I and I believe we have also that for the OPEB. Um, so what are your recommendations around? Whether to either, like, what is, what is your recommendation around? Paying directly or having it here, like, because this is something that they stay out it is talking to, like, is pointing out in in his report.
I would like to be able to answer one of your questions tonight, but, uh, again, that's another question that. Uh, I would be, I'm not allowed to even give an opinion on it because I'm not an investment advisor. I can tell you for sure that I have clients that. The idea of giving more money calpers for them is 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 not a good idea. They don't trust calpers and they don't trust how calpers invest their money. And then I have other clients who feel the complete opposite, where they feel like, no, it's better to give it to calpers. Uh, than to invest it ourselves. So it really depends on the client personality and also depends on. How confident you feel about that trustee or the the investment advisor that you're using to manage those funds. Uh. Cannot really, I think it would it it would definitely not be appropriate for me to make any recommendation.
Yeah, no, I I I just mentioned that because something that they they say out it mentioned it was that. Uh, the city council decided to have these funds and it was presented in a way that it was good for 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 the city. But also point out, pointed out that, uh. Uh, there was not any presentation about, um, other options. So I would like, um. The staff and that we can have this presentation about whether, um, having it here with these funds, it will be beneficial. Uh, versus, uh, paying directly to calpers and had the numbers because, uh, at the city. Uh, the city council when made, when made the decisions about, um. Having the funds locally instead of paying it directly, um, there were no, um. More information of other options. So I think like, uh, just in terms of. How we move forward, I think it will be important and I and I know that, uh, city manager and finance staff is working really hard on that. Um, to make more data available and and just compare auctions. So we had that and we don't just. Vote on these auctions because it's the only one that is presented to us. So I just want to also make sure that. Uh, as we continue, because we are dealing with the state area. And as we continue to move in the recommend, in the eleven recommendations and and the our action plan that. We have, uh, this information, uh, more available and with more data. Thank you.
I mean, the only thing I would add to that is that state auditors are also not financial advisors and investment advisors and. I would be careful also following that advice without. Getting your own consultation and making sure that you're putting the money in the right place.
Thank you so much for that comment.
All right, uh, if there's no further comments and I forgot to close public comments, I will do that now. So public comment is closed and, uh, it seems that there are no other, uh, questions. This was to receive a report. Thank you so much. Uh, you illuminated a lot of questions. And I appreciate all the hard work that you put into it. So thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. City staff will follow up via email and will also schedule a series of study sessions to address the the questions.
Thank you. So it's time to move on to the next item.
The next item is item R two is to create wastewater and storm drain ad hoc committee, the city of Richmond, consisting of three city council members.
All right, um, since this is my item, I'll, uh, I'll frame it. Um, we have, um.
Hey CRT, can you please mute whatever's in the background? Thank you.
All right, so, uh, whoever it was that was swimming underwater is, uh.
They might just be outside because it's raining really hard, so we apologize for the disturbance.
No problem. Okay, so, um, I, uh. Feel that this is, uh, an essential, uh, committee of. The wastewater ad hoc committee will study the state of Richmond's municipal wastewater and storm drain infrastructure. And they'll work to provide additional oversight in Richmond's municipal storage treatment, infrastructure and storm drains. Examine possible infrastructure updates that may be needed. Look for opportunities for grant money from the state and federal government. Provide public transparency around the costs and issues associated with the municipal wastewater systems. I think, um, some of the issues that, uh, we need to examine is compliance with agreement between the city and Veolia. Uh, we also need to look at, uh, projects that need to be placed on council calendar to review. Uh, for adoption or approve or approval. Uh, consider future budget items that maybe need to be discussed, like bonds, grants, funding sources. Uh, Veolia is non-responsive most of the time when dealing with the Baykeeper Settlement Agreement requirements. We need to be proactive on that. Overall management of the treatment plant and sanitary sewer system. Uh, we prefer a preventative instead of a reactive approach. So these are all items that I think would be beneficial for the city in our in in regards to our relationship with Veolia. So I will open up, uh, the floor for, uh. Questions. Yes, uh, council member Sahela. Yes.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, I think it's a very good idea, uh, especially because at least in my district, there are many complaints about Veolia. But I'm confused about the point of having an ad hoc committee. If you could please explain what's special about it, whether like. Some council members working together, uh, does it make it more official or, well, what are the implications of having an ad hoc committee?
Well, uh, council members can work i- independently, but, uh, by doing so, we have the issue of Brown Act violations. For instance, if if you're talking to someone, uh, about a VEOLI issue and I'm talking to someone about a VEOLI issue, not knowing that you're having that conversation. Uh, we may have cross, across conversations, uh, you know, breaking the Brown Act. So so I think it's safer to have an ad hoc committee who is dedicated to focusing on this, uh, which would, uh. Enable our efforts to be more focused. And, um, I'm sure that we have some members that have more expertise in this area than others. And and I think, uh, by, uh, creating a committee where those people can focus on the Veolia and wastewater issues. We can, we can move forward a lot more clearly.
Thank you. And is there a timeline?
There is the timeline, uh, timeline has to, uh. Uh, be with all, all, uh, uh, ad hoc committees. Um, we had wanted a timeline that would have, uh, seen the, uh. The completion of the wastewater improvements. But, uh, that timeline seems to be a bit too long. So 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 we've, um. Uh, decided that that timeline needs to be narrowed and, uh, possibly later, uh, expanded if necessary. Um, and I I'm, uh, I'm sorry, but I don't have a, uh, a clear idea of what that timeline should be. But, um. Uh, if I could have some opinion from legal in terms of, uh, what what, uh. Timeline would would be adequate.
Uh, well, uh, given the the plant goes, the contract goes by another four years. And I think given, uh, the ad hoc nature, uh, perhaps you want to focus on, uh, these elements over the next couple of years and then. Um, by then, we should be, uh, have completed negotiation of whatever agreement we're going to be able to work out. So maybe a shorter time and if that proves insufficient, then you can deal with it then.
Um, okay, so so a a two year.
Um, what, a lot more questions quickly. So I assume you're one of them and then you appoint two more people?
Yes.
And, um, I would like to share with that ad hoc committee, for example, what's going on in my district with Veolia. So legally not to violate Brown Act, how do I inform the committee?
Well, it's on the agenda to appoint it at this point. So I think by making that comment, um, the mayor. Uh, can determine who he wants to put on the committee.
Yeah, but my question is, three people will be in the committee?
Yes.
The rest of us, other council members.
I thought you were asking to be on the committee.
I'm sorry?
I thought you were asking.
No, 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 I'm asking how to communicate with that hot committee to not violate Brown Act.
Well, you would, uh, not, you would commit, communicate with them, uh, at meetings, at public, at the meetings. You can certainly, you you can communicate with staff.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, what is the mandate again, specifically? Could you repeat, please?
Yeah, the, uh. The mandate is is written in the, uh, it's to provide additional oversight to Richmond's municipal sewage treatment, infrastructure and storm drains. Examine possible infrastructure updates that may be needed. Look for opportunities for grant money from the state and federal government. Provide public transparency around the cost and issues associated with the multiple wastewater system.
Okay, I'm I'm a bit surprised that they're, uh, expected to look for grant money. I hope council members can do it, uh, but. Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Uh, Vice Mayor McLaughlin?
Um, yeah, first of all, I just wanted to, um. To add another comment to what Councilmember Bana, um, was saying and got the conversation going on. My understanding or my, perhaps a request would be if the committee could, um. Give updates to the council at a council meeting or if it's legally, um, sensitive matters. Uh, a closed session, um, but some update from the committee and then the whole council can give input. But I think the other point about giving input to staff, uh, that staff could, um. I don't know, staff isn't supposed to play the middleman in terms of a Brown Act either, isn't that correct?
Or yes, but in terms of bringing issues to the committee when they're having a meeting and getting information. So I you're you're not necessarily, this person said this and that person said this, but you're bringing forward issues that have been raised.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And the other and the other thing is a question, um, so. This is, um, an ad hoc committee mainly, is it to, or solely, is it to discuss the Richmond Municipal Wastewater District? Or is it also to discuss the West County Wastewater District and the Stige Wastewater District?
Uh, no, it's it's solely for Veolia.
It's which manages the RM, what is it, RM? WD Richmond Municipal Wastewater District. Okay, so it's just for that. So. Cause some of the city, and my district is almost all Richmond Municipal, um. Wastewater District, a small portion of my district is Stige.
Correct.
And I think a lot of the districts have, um, have Richmond Municipal, but some have Wa- West County. And some have, so I don't know exactly what the breakdown is, but this will just be focusing on Richmond Municipal. So that's what I, and and Veolia. Okay, thank you.
Yes, so, um. Uh, council member Sepeda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and I. I come from the West County Wastewater District, uh, prior to this life here, uh, so. Hopefully I'll be on it. Uh, District two is split, uh, half of it is West County wastewater. The other half is managed by the the Richmond Municipal. I know District four, the majority of it is in District, is is West County Wastewater District. And I think maybe a little sliver of District one, um, but everybody else is is part of the Richmond one. Uh, but something that we were working on and I'm hoping that this commission or this committee could also look at is a climate action plan for the. Uh, for the Richmond Municipal, uh, we don't have one. And right now, from what I, from what I know, is that we are releasing, uh, fairly untreated water or very limited untreated water right into the bay. Uh, the West County Wastewater District, uh, we don't release water, we release very, very little water into the bay. Most of it is either recycled and reused, either by East Bay Mud or Chevron. Uh, and then we're looking at ways to, uh, create a purple pipe. Right, being able to utilize that water again and hopefully, uh, Richmond, our municipal can partake in that, uh, conversation. Uh, so hopefully, again, this committee can expand and 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 not even expand, but just have these, this be part of the conversation. About how do we reduce our carbon footprint, uh, come up with the climate action plan? Uh, just looking at our, this agency or this piece of Richmond that we haven't really looked at, it's the unsexy. Uh, piece of Richmond that nobody ever looks at unless it's a problem. And right now we have Keller Beach Sewage, for example. Now everybody's realizing you have to flush and now you know what's underneath, but other than that is the unsexy infrastructure. And, you know, it's not as sexy as as paving the roads. People see it and then you fix it and they immediately know about it. This one, they won't know until they can't flush anymore. So the unsexy infrastructure, hopefully we bring it up. And we start talking about it so that we can move ourselves to a better, uh, climate action plan and also working with staff. Uh, and then I hopefully also an advisory to the council so we can make those decisions. And the West County Wastewater, uh, there we would meet two to three times a month to talk just about sewage. Here, I don't think this council has met about sewage in many years, right, because it's the it's the hidden infrastructure. So hopefully. We pull it out and talk more about it, especially with all the issues that we're having. And also to communicate better. I love that as part of the the agenda item to be able to communicate with residents more. I think our residents really want to know what's going on underneath them and what they can do to make it better. So I I totally support this commission. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing it up.
Thank you. Council member Willis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, along, uh, council members, uh, Peta's, uh, comments. Yeah, obviously, I'm not against this committee. I mean, if there's more oversight, especially if there's folks interested in wanting to dig their teeth into this, you know, that's good. Ideally, I'm not saying this is going to happen overnight, but one thing that came up for me as Councilmember Sepeda was talking when we were talking. He was talking about the unsexy infrastructure and when folks are starting to have problems, then that's when they start to speak up. It'd be good to figure out if there are any of those issues already happening for residents and we just don't know about it. I don't necessarily know the capacity or the outreach that looks into that, like it is going to be tedious. But if there are people already experiencing some of these issues in the Waste Management District and they're not really reaching out to us or trying to. Field these issues on their own, it'd be good to gather that information to see what issues are existing out there or at least create the forum where people can come to us and say. We want to know like what's going on. Come tell us if you're experiencing various issues in your area. So just wanted to add. So just wanted to add that for, to the discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
Yeah, so just adding a comment to that, I'm, I'm glad that stormwater systems are also included in this. I think that, you know, we're seeing pretty extreme water conditions now, and I don't think that's going to be something that's going to go away in the future. And, you know, the flooding on streets are pretty extreme too, and I think that there's a lot of things that we could do with green infrastructure to help alleviate some of that structure, some of that flooding that's happening during these storm events with, you know, certain kind of rain garden and other infrastructure. And so, you know, this committee could also look at, you know, at least within the project area or the focus area, where there is flooding and, and suggest, you know, impactful green infrastructure so we can alleviate it, so we don't have the kind of road conditions and other things that are happening. So it just, it's a great idea and way past time.
Councilmember Jimenez?
I just wanted to say thank you for bringing, bringing this up. I think like having more time to really dig into what is the issues and what are the solution is going to be important. Sometimes, as you notice, we have so many questions, and some of them are not getting answered because the time that we have here. So I, I appreciate that you, you put this, because then you will allow some of the, the council that are interested in, in this issue to really dig deeper, to really get to the questions, answers, and look for solutions. I agree with Councilmember Robinson about green infrastructure. This is was about stormwater management, I use super clearly. So we have a a system here where is, is, is not combined. So the rain goes directly to the, is, is, is doesn't get treated because it's not combined like San Francisco. So green infrastructure makes a really good, it's key here because it's not only for flooring issues, but it's also for getting some of the contaminants for the first rain filter before the water goes underground and eventually goes to the bay. So I am happy that this is, this is creating. I hope that all of us go to support it, and thank you for bringing, thank you for, for making this a space as you as a mayor to really de- deal with this as more weather, more the climate change is impacting us, and we need to start thinking about this, the condition that we have in our infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bana? Actually, we, we, we still need to have public comment.
Oh, sorry. My question was, do we know the name of the members, or we make the motion without names?
Oh, we don't know the names of the members yet. So I, I guess, I guess we could choose the members before we even vote? Good, okay.
Public comment should occur first.
Yeah, that, that didn't make sense to me. Okay, so, all right, so do we have public comment?
We do not have any speakers in the chambers. We do. We have one speaker in the chambers. Armenia. Armenia? Yeah, okay, Dela Mora. Okay, you'll have two minutes.
So if you, if you want to look into sewage issues, have plumbers or people that have expertise in plumbing. That's a huge amount of expense.
No, we can't hear you on TV.
Okay, okay. And then.
Oh, ma'am, ma'am, for the public record, ma'am, we, we try to be respectful and make sure that we.
No, it's that the people who are watching cannot hear you. So that is why he.
Okay, um, they should come like in person. And, uh, in wastewater, can I do that? In wastewater and to look into the issue before you start putting a large amount of money. So like do your research before you agree on something, just like how you have the finance person here. Like he's giving you advice and all that before you agree to, like, your plan, right? You never want to agree to something without knowing how much it's going to cost you first. And as a citizen, that's very important to me because, like, I live here and I want my road to be nice. And you guys have been promising, promising of that for extremely long time, and it has not happened. So please prioritize, like, go step by step, like prioritize one thing first, get that done, right? And then as you get things done, you can add more things to the agenda. It doesn't make sense to have a bunch of stuff on your agenda and then get nothing done, right? So it would be better if you had prioritized one thing, get that done, and then move forward. That's just my advice, right? I would like to see things get done, not to see a bunch of stuff and then nothing gets done, because I live here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Yes, we have speaker, one speaker on Zoom. Just were, please.
We have Sarah C. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, thank you. My name is Sarah Cantor. I'm the resident of Richmond. And I am really excited that there are council members who are willing to dig into issues surrounding drainage, stormwater, and really want to echo Councilmember Robinson's suggestions about adding green infrastructure. And I also would like to add that I hope that this committee looks into our storm drains and the valves that, at least in my neighborhood, it looks like there are flapper valves on some of the drains that mean that during high tides, the valves are closed and the drains don't drain at all, they're just fully closed. So I would love if the, this committee could look into that as well. And I think that Councilmember Robinson would be an excellent member of the committee if she is interested in serving. Thank you.
Thank you. And there are no more speakers.
All right, if there are no more speakers, I will close public comment. And now it's time for discussion. I, I would like to say that we do have a climate action plan. The climate action plan is a living document. And when we come up with information, our decisions on how to move forward, those decisions need to go into climate action plan. For instance, when we did the, did the report on sea level rise, that information and suggestions should go into the climate action plan. The information that we gather as this ad hoc committee, those recommendations, if they pertain to climate change, should go into that action plan. So, so there, there's a lot of movement that can come from this committee. And this committee is not spending money. This committee is doing research, is finding answers that will actually save the city money. Oh, we're also focusing on stormwater. And it's my understanding that the stormwater actually does go to the processing plant, and they have a holding tank. And I remember that when there's a lot of rain, the holding tank actually exceeded its capacity. And when it exceeded this capacity, that's when a lot of the water goes into the bay without being processed, the stormwater. Anyway, if there's no more comments, then I, I guess it's time for a motion.
I will move the item.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Jimenez, seconded by Councilmember Sepeda. May we have a roll call?
Mr. Mayor, were you intending to appoint the committees?
Um, I, I thought, I thought that I should, I thought, I was said that, I thought it was said that the appointments would be made after, after the, the motion. But, but if it pleased the council, I, I can do it beforehand.
Or, Mr. Mayor, you could put it on consent calendar, like you do other appointments at the next meeting.
Okay, I, I.
Notice that a, a Councilmember Robinson just got appointed by some public comments.
I, I did hear that. Uh, yes, Councilmember Willis?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that in the past, when some ad hoc committees were created, sometimes they just kind of happened like right there on a dais after we voted, it didn't have to show up on consent calendars. So I mean, if there are two or three people already willing to do it, just name them and appoint them unless they say no, because that's what we've done in the past many, 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 many times.
Right.
And, and just pointing that out, go about it as you will, though.
Right. And, and I heard you say after the vote. I heard you say after the vote.
I've seen us not even take a vote and just seen the mayor say, well, I'll just appoint the ad hoc committee, you, 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 all right, great, moving on, so.
This is a new mayor, so.
Yeah, well, well, I would like this voted on. So, so a roll call?
Councilmember Bana?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sepeda?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
All right, so if it pleased the council, we can appoint those people now, or we can wait and have it on a consent calendar. So let's just do, do a hand, how many people want to appoint now? Well, uh huh, well, it, it looks as if it will be consent calendar. I didn't see much motion for having it done now. Okay, let's move on to the next item.
We're moving to the consent calendar item P eight C. That is to approve a contract with Whit O'Brien's LLC to provide consulting services for oversight and compliance related to American Rescue Plan Act, that's ARPA funds, in the amount not to exceed three hundred thousand, for a term commencing March twenty second of twenty twenty three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty seven, and appropriate the use of three hundred thousand in city ARPA funds for this contract.
Good evening, council. As you're aware, the city is about to receive twenty seven point seven million dollars in ARPA funding. All the funds must be obligated by December thirty first, twenty twenty four, and spent by December thirty first, twenty twenty six. For that reason and others, we decided to do an RFP, and that RFP was issued September nineteenth, twenty twenty two. And that is so we could get services for oversight and compliance related to our ARPA funding. There are a lot of requirements, guidance, and limitations to the funding, and so far to my left here, has been the first, our expert, ARPA expert, LaShonda, and we are going to need help get, making sure all of, that we were in compliance and all the reporting is done. So we will need an outside consultant to help with all of these tasks. We also received about four responses to our RFP, and Wilt O'Brien was the one we chose. Are there any questions?
I may just add, unfortunately, the city has in the past had to repay numerous grants. And given the large amount of federal funds here, we think it would, that this is a prudent investment for the city council to consider, because we don't want to have to pay back any of our ARPA dollars. That's essentially the, the trade off here, is what we're trying to mitigate, and make sure that staff has support to make sure we follow all the appropriate requirements provided by the federal government for our upcoming expenditures.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, because when I saw this item, and it's three hundred thousand dollars. And we had already approved two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from ARPA to do the community needs assessment that we don't know where it is. So it will be spending five hundred and, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from ARPA fund that could go to the community directly, right? So my, so I am concerned that, like, we, instead of spending it in, 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 in the community and the needs, we are spending it in consultants that, like, like the two hundred and fifty, we haven't heard anything about it. And my question is about like, you are saying that this, this consultant will do some of the support for how to spend these ARPA funds. Do we have compliance staff, and how that, like, how, how that is working for us? And do we have that, like, because it's not only this grant, but you mentioned that there is so many other grants. So I, I wonder if it's better to really have in-house people that knows about this and, and can not only be looking at the ARPA, but is looking at all their grants. Instead of putting three thousand dollars outs- outsourcing a, a company that, I don't know, like, I, I am just trying to assess, is, is much better to have that in-house and to have more oversee, and that i- is, is more longer term for us in terms of grant compliance.
I was gonna just leave by saying that we're trying to do both. We're trying to create complex contract compliance positions for internal and external, because we've recently had a transition from our employment and training department. And the city council has recently updated and requested things like community benefits, right? And so we want to have an external person that works on community benefits, living wage, and all of those things. And then we want to have an internal person that works closely with the city attorney's office, since the city attorney's office, per the charter, has purview over contracts. So in this instance, we're saying do both, but because of the, of the large dollar amount, they're not, we're not saying they would tell us how to spend the money. That would come from the community needs assessment and from, based on the council direction. But it's once you identify a specific area that you want to fund, that we make sure that we follow and conduct the procurement appropriately, and we do all the reporting to the federal government appropriately, so we don't have audit findings and have to repay the money.
So, but can, can we do this in-house? If you are talking about, like, you are talking about getting somebody, these contract compliance position, it's not better to do that, like, I, I am just trying to figure it out.
Yeah, we want to do both, because the regulations, LaShonda, how many pages are the regulations?
Hundreds of pages. So the, the guidance provided by the United States Treasury, they have the final report, they have reporting guidance documents, and then those documents refer to other federal guidelines. It is very complicated, extremely complicated, and I think as staff who tried our best so far to understand and make wise decisions and provide the best information and recommendations we can as city council. Thus far, we haven't spent a huge amount of the ARPA dollars, but you will receive an update from the, the consultant that did the community needs assessment. They are done. We are wanting to align it as part of the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four budget process, and also would like to have a consultant on board to help provide some direction. So if council says, let's do X, Y, and Z, we can go to the consultant, which is this consultant, to say, does this align with the requirements that are within the ARPA regulations? So we really are trying to align everything. And the community needs assessment was, in my opinion, money well spent. It was a council decision to be able to do that. The US Treasury actually recommended funding for jurisdictions to be spent on community needs assessments, to really understand what community needs were. So you will receive that report, and council will be able to make a decision based on that information. As the city manager stated, this consultant- As the city manager stated, this consultant will not tell us what to spend the funds on. They will be able to say, as staff does its due diligence and pulls together our quarterly reports, we will be able to go to the consultant and say, does this look right before we submit it? If council has an idea about a project, we can say, consultant, does this align with all of the rules and regulations set forth by the federal government? And it's based on need, so we're only going to ask for uh, support from this consultant as needed, and it's based on an hourly basis. So I don't hope, expect to spend the full three hundred thousand dollars, but it is um, what the request is, and it's for a four-year term.
And especially since we're currently going to be commencing a search for a finance director. We think it's important that if we're trying to recruit someone and to onboard someone, they know that the council is um, that we're going to have additional resources to help shore up. Um, while we're also concurrently trying to complete the state audit and do things like the council's requested us to come up with a plan regarding reimagining public safety and the community, the community crisis response. So if we're trying to do all those things, it would be good on some of these other areas where we know we need support, but also provide staff some additional resources, and also we're we're looking for our library director.
So I just, so what I understand then is that you don't think the the position that you are going to hire is going to be able to do this?
I think that it's going to take time for us to create that position if the personnel with the personnel board, because the position doesn't currently exist the way that we think it needs to be. Uh, we need to meet and confer with the union, need to go to personnel board, and then after that, it would be brought to city council for approval. But the current job description doesn't align with the current city council policy direction.
Well, I I just feel like uh, I think as we eh, are talking about spending, I think like, for me, it's more about what is the infrastructure that we want to strengthen in our city government? And we are doing a lot of con- contracts, and sometimes it's good because we add capacity, but sometime I feel like uh, that is um, eh, limiting our capacity to really uh, strengthen uh, the infrastructure that we want to create in the city. Um, so these are my, and 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 just kind of like um, go like, is like five hundred and fifty thousand dollars going from ARPA funds that were created uh, to support uh, our community and needs are going to consultants. Thank you.
Your points are well taken. I just personally don't feel like I can ask one more person in finance to do one more thing. And so while we're trying to staff up, we think that this is an important investment for the city council to consider based on the significant size of our ARPA dollars. And because we've had troubles in the past with HUD, so I feel like we're on the radar.
Yeah. And I just want to add, if if the concern is the dollar amount, right, and it's a four-year term, if we need to shorten that for a moment and be able to come back to city council less than the dollar amount for now, to me is extremely important. And um, for our city to have this technical assistance from experts who know ARPA and all the rules and regulations, you do not currently have staff who know it as well as we need to know it, and we want to be good stewards over these ARPA dollars so that it can benefit our residents.
Yeah, no, I I think like for me is is talking in the long term about how we really eh eh, whether we want to strengthen the infrastructure that we have in the city in the long term or not. So that is is my my eh, it's not, it's it's about the dollar amount, and it's about um, the long term of us having um, the staff that we need to really address this, because it's not going, like, it's not just the ARPA fund, we will have other grants. And just thinking a- about how what it what it looks like to to strengthen our infrastructure to really uh, have uh, in-house um, good staff that is helping us, so we avoid um, spending all this money in consultants.
Completely understand, and as the city manager stated, we are have been working on trying to create a contract compliance unit to do exactly what you're saying in the long term to build the infrastructure in-house, but in the meantime, in the interim, this is what we feel like we need right now.
And we want to do both concurrently. Um, is what we're trying to do.
Councilmember, uh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor McGlaughlin?
Yeah, just a couple general questions. Um, so the ARPA funds have to be allocated by a certain year and have to be spent by another year. Could you remind me of those years?
It'd be allocated by December thirty first, twenty twenty four, and spent by December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
So by December thirty first, twenty twenty four, we have to have them all allocated, and then we have an additional two years to implement them. Okay. Um, and so my other question is is a little more specific about um, this issue of um, these regulations as to what qualifies uh, for ARPA funds? And what would happen if the city, um, I mean, is there a penalty? What if this, I mean, I guess you submit the request for a particular use of the ARPA funds or multiple uses? And if it doesn't fit into their regulations, what would happen? It would bounce back or what?
A very good question. So the federal government is not looking at individual submissions from jurisdictions as we submit our quarterly reports. They really are depending on jurisdictions to understand the rules and regulations about how they're spending money. So as staff, I've read the regulations, I've asked other staff to do the same, so we have all done our absolute best to understand the hundreds of pages of regulations and align them uh, with the the recommendations for spending. And so based on what we've done, we submit our quarterly reports. The federal government doesn't look and say, great, good job. At some point, they very well might do that, and when they do, that is where we want to make sure we have crossed our Ts and dotted our Is and checked all our boxes to be confident that we have done what's right, and so this contract will help us do that. But we have gotten no feedback thus far, and we've submitted all our reports on time.
So that would mean if we, is there a, I mean, if we didn't get, if we submitted um, requests to utilize the money for certain uses, um, maybe mid twenty twenty four, and then it gets rejected or whatever. Um, so is there a danger of losing some money if it gets rejected?
And depending on who's in office, that usually dictates who maybe ask more questions and who may have to, if we have an audit by the federal government and they come in and they ask for an audit and they go through everything, we want to make sure that we have a good administrative record uh, for review, so we don't have to repay any of the money.
Okay, so I understand what Councilmember Jimenez um, was saying. I think it's valuable um, information, and I think staff should continue to work on trying to get um, in in-house infrastructure in place for uh, a lot of the things that we're using contracts um, for right now. Um, but I think that given this is a short timeline, um, and it isn't the full three hundred thousand necessarily, I'm hearing it's an up to three hundred thousand. Um, so I'm okay with us moving forward with this, because I know we have a um, we have a lot of um, community needs that we want to fill with these ARPA funds, and we want to make sure we utilize them to the best use possible and not get them rejected. Um, so I'm good with that, but I hear there's other comments.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. Um, so you suggested that it might be possible to uh, maybe do a shorter term contract and then have it renewed if if it's working out well and it does all the things that we hope it's going to do. Do you see any downsides to approaching this that way?
It just means that it's additional staff time and has to go back to council. So I think what we were trying to do was just do it for the full term, so we can go to council one time and not have to amend it and come back. But if we will, if it's the council um, discretion to to do something different, we'll do that.
Uh, do you think that doing it in maybe for, instead of a four-year term, like a two-year term? Because that would kind of get you through allocations, um, and then you would have a good sense of what it to have evaluation of whether or not the relationship is working, if it's helpful, whatever, and it's le- less of a commitment of funds.
I'm okay with it, and I'm okay with it.
Yeah, sounds, yeah. So I can understand, like, when you have a large grant like this with a, you know, an encyclopedia of of regulations that you need to follow in in the in the possibility of company coming at a later date to tell you you need to repay funds because you didn't do X, Y, Z, right? That's a huge threat. Um, and it's a little bit different than some of the other grants. Um, I do, I would like to ask of maybe city manager's office that I would love to see what the plan is overall for addressing um, uh, building capacity within the city to administer grant funds. Because I I feel like, yeah, we we actually want to be going after more grants, but if we don't have capacity to administer them, then, you know, even the committee that was just, you know, but together to look for some grant funds, eh, we we won't be able to really manage anything that we find. And so I would love to see what um, what staffing structure you're suggesting, not just in terms of compliance, but actually in terms of, you know, report writing and and things like that. I feel like having only um, you know, uh, the staff that are assigned different areas work on reports and grants, maybe maybe isn't the best way forward, like having somebody that is specific, you know, a team or people who are specifically grant writers, grant administrators, um, who can work in tandem with people who are specific to the subject matter um, to write like the narrative portions of the reports, but who understand how to administer grants. I would I would love to see what you have in mind for dealing with that and for building up the capacity, because I I do feel like Richmond is so well positioned to get more funds from grants, but we're not well positioned currently to administer them or even apply.
I'm happy to report out on that. Part of our our, historically, a lot of our work happened around um, health and all the policies and our climate action work is how that was structured and interdepartmental teams work on grant applications. And with the three people that you met this evening, primarily a lot of our grants happen in the built environment. So those folks that you met this evening are going to be a large part of our grant implementation. Um, but I would be happy to report back to the council um, at our upcoming budget meetings about how that's going, and we'll start next Tuesday.
And there's a lot more opportunities for grants outside of the built environment as well, to do some of the other issues that the city is facing. But again, that only works if we have, you know, the capacity um, in terms of our staff and to.
Yeah, there's finance managers, for for example, like in community services, we created an admin unit recently in mini services, and so that all rolls up under hope, and so we'll be happy to go into those neat details um, next week and thereafter regarding how it's working.
I I would just just reiterate just like one last time, just to be clear, it'd be great to see what proposed infrastructure is for the whole city across departments to administer, apply for um, grants, just to understand what your plan is across departments.
Understood, thank you.
Councilmember Zapata?
Vice Mayor, um, couple of questions here, and I was trying to read through the contract, and I'm not a lawyer, so uh, Mr. Alashire, I remember looking at you here. Uh, do we have somewhere in there that if they don't do something right, or they miss a deadline, or they miss something, that we can go after them for the funds?
So I don't know. Okay, because that, I want to make sure that that's in the contract, because if they do miss, you know, we sometimes have contractors that might miss a deadline here and there. Um, but there's a lot of money at stake, and we don't have a lot of time to go back to redo it. So I want to make sure that we get the money if you know, somebody drops the ball, and then if it's not us, that we still get it. Um, so if we could please make sure that that's on there if this moves forward.
Um, I mean, your broader issue is what are the penalties to the uh, consultant if they don't perform and manage the money properly?
Penalties, but also penalties I see as a lesser, right? Eh, I want to make sure that if they miss a deadline to get, I'm just making up a number here, five million dollars, I don't I don't want to go back to them and say, hey, you owe us twenty thousand dollars as a penalty, because we just missed out on a eh, oh, oh, five million dollars. So I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, that we, if they miss something in terms of a big dollar amount or any dollar amount, that we get that money from them. So we are not out that money.
Well, are you saying that if you miss, I mean, you have the money, right, the 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 twenty-seven million dollars you have?
So we we have what we don't have, because that's why this company is here for it, right? They're going to help us allocate it correctly and making sure that it's processed correctly, so the feds don't come back and say, hey, you spent it putting up X, Y, and Z, and that's not eh eh, a correct uh, expense, so you're going to have to pay us back this money. And I want to make sure that this company, if they do something wrong, that we go to them and say, hey, we have to give these five million dollars back to the feds because of your error. So you are going to have to pay us that five million dollars so that we can utilize it in the another project.
Uh, eh, there should be an appropriate penalty clause, but the saying that if we had to give money back to the feds, they have to give us an equal amount might not be a penalty they would agree to.
Okay, because I'm saying, I just want to make sure that we're protecting the city. Because we've seen that happen, where we don't always get the best share for ourselves, right? So we can make sure that's in there, and if they're not willing to, then maybe we have to look at some of the other contractors there, but there's a lot of money, and again, we we have four years, or actually less than four years to make this happen. So not a lot of wiggle room, and we we might not find out something's wrong until twenty twenty seven. And the feds are going to come back, and we want to make sure that we can go back, and they're only holding data for five years. So we want to make sure that we can go back and say, hey, you accidentally told us something, and we move forward, and the feds are taking back the money two years later. So I just want to make sure that we're protected, so um, or or, you know, figuring out ways to hold them accountable. And uh, I noticed that the contract is longer than the time that we have to spend the funds, but we have to spend the funds by uh, twenty twenty-six, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and their contract goes to twenty twenty-seven, assuming, but I don't want to assume the reason, so maybe if you can tell me more.
So the reporting, so we always do reporting three months after, do quarterly reporting after the quarter closes. So this gives us time to make sure we can do all the proper reporting to the federal government at the closeout at the end of twenty twenty-six, and I also like to end contracts at the end of the fiscal year, just for tracking purposes.
That works for me, thank you. Um, and how long might this take? And Shasa, this might be for you here. Uh, how long do we think it'll take to get someone in-house up and going, since we're talking about hypotheticals here? Potentially hire somebody that can help us with all grants? And maybe this is something they can take in the future? It's a four-year contract?
Yes, um, I will confer with um, staff tomorrow, and um, I can respond to to council this week. It will depend on the regularity under which the personnel board meets.
Okay, thank you. And then just to call out, there is a thirty-day termination uh, notice that we can give, so if we get somebody up and going.
We can always terminate.
Yeah, so if we get somebody up and going in two years, it gives us that leeway there.
Right, we can always, we can always have a a kick an off-ramp. We just want to to get on the road and not get in the flood.
Yeah, no flooding, we're working on the committee. Thank you, no more questions. You have the council members? If there's not, I I have a few questions. Uh, the uh, the uh, community survey that we paid two hundred thousand for, when when did we agree to that, and when did we get the results?
You are, I I believe you're referring to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar allocation for the community needs assessment for ARPA, is that correct? Um, I would have to go back to find the date, but it was part of, I believe, when council approved its initial ARPA allocation back in I think June of twenty twenty-one. So it was a part of that entire, we we presented a package um, of maybe eight million dollars, seven, eight million dollars worth of recommendations for how we could start to spend ARPA dollars. And part of it was um, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract, or spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a consultant to do a community needs assessment, to go do that work and um, hear from community about how we could spend the remaining ARPA dollars and then bring that back to city council. So that work has been completed. And um, the plan right now is to hopefully bring it to city council um, in April. So you all have received an update from from this group, but you have not received the final.
Okay, so s- s- so we got, we got a report on the results of the community survey, is that correct?
Received it yet. You will receive it in April when we bring it. So the community needs assessment, not the survey, but the community needs assessment. and will be provided to city council along with a recommended strategic investment plan will be provided to city council. As of right now, it's on for the study session in April.
And that's the meeting we need to confer about timeline for, because there's conflicts.
Okay, now, the other question. In the program design on page four, it says, provide direct outreach to stakeholders in each program category. Collect testimony, records, and other information necessary to assess the extent of financial need for each category. Hasn't that already been done by the community survey?
So what, when we issue the RFP for this work, we did it so that they could, this this consultant firm or anyone that responded to the RFP could do multiple things. They could help us, support us on compliance, which right now is where we are and what we need. We also asked for individuals who could, depending on what council wanted to do with the ARPA dollars, could provide more services to us. So what you're reading and referring to is that additional work that we're not asking them to do right now. But just say council wanted to develop a a program. This firm could, they responded, they have the capacity, the expertise and the knowledge to not only help us with compliance, but help us do some management and oversight and implementation of programs.
And and what will we do with the information that we've already gathered?
So the information from the community needs assessment is it just asks the community with their, how they were impacted by COVID, how they think the city council could best use the funding. And then it still will be up to city council to make a final decision. So if council, based on the feedback they got from the community, said, we want to do a, you know, program A, and it would take a lot of staff time to implement program A, we actually have a firm that is able and has the expertise to actually help staff implement. So it will be based on what council decides, and we did it that way because we have no idea what council was going to decide based on the community needs assessment. We haven't gotten there yet. And so right now, what we know we need support on is the technical assistance, just just making sure that what we are doing so far is right, and whatever council decides to do, that we understand that we're in compliance. If we, if there is a desire to do more, this contract, this consultant will allow us to do that, which is also why the dollar amount. But right now, we're only using it as needed to help with compliance.
Okay. So the money that we've already spent, the ARPA funds, do we feel secure that they were done correctly, or would this company be going over past past funding mechanisms?
We want them to go over everything. I mean, as staff, we did the absolute best we could with the knowledge we had and reading and talking to folks. We did the absolute best that we could. And it wasn't just me, it was other staff individuals who tried to confirm and what was in the ARPA regulations. But once they get on board, we will have them go back and look at everything.
Okay, thank you. Do we have public speakers?
Do not have any public speakers.
All right, if no public speakers, then public comment is closed. Do we have any other comments or a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we pass it. Thank you.
Can we, can we add something like, can we make an amendment? Because I think like.
I would actually like to make a substitute.
Okay.
And my substitute motion would be to to have the contract be for two years instead of four. And the reason I believe we should do that is because I I I want to see, I want to think positively. And by thinking positively, I see our city hiring the people to do the work so that we won't have to depend on on these contractors. I believe we can do it. And 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 if we put all of our energy into making it happen, I'm sure we can make it happen.
Can I add something like that? And instead of three hundred thousand, so is a hundred and fifty maximum?
I'll accept that.
Okay, I second that.
Okay, so so we have a motion for two years for a hundred and fifty maximum.
I second that. Oh, do you hear a second?
All right, shall we have a roll call?
Councilmember Bana?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Zapata?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we have come to our favorite part, I believe, adjournment. Do we have any remembrances or memorials that we want to close in?
I I would like to close the meeting in memory of Jane Franklin, who is the mother of one of our residents who has been an active member of the Panhandle Annex and Ms. Franklin, Jane Franklin, that is a long, long sheet, long, long time activist on social justice issues and on Cuba relationships for normalizing relations in Cuba. Just I had an opportunity to meet her myself and just a woman with a lot of energy, and sadly, she was up there in years, but a life well lived in the in the service of others, and I just want to remember her as we close this meeting.
And I would also like to close the session in memory of a dear friend of mine, Julia Roulette, who passed this Saturday at the age of a hundred and four. She was a dear friend of my wife's. She was an artist. And in our living room, we have a copper enameled tray that she made. And I believe that close to the time that she passed, our cat knocked it off of the table it was on, and it clattered on the floor. And Julia Roulette blew through my mind, and I believe it was a message from her to tell us goodbye. Any other memories? No, in that, in that case, adjourned.